Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. This is the November 14th City Council meeting. Thank you for those who stayed after from the last meeting. We've already established a quorum. And before we have a moment of silence, there's something I would like to say really quick and someone I'd like to recognize in the community. Last week on Thursday, we lost a member of our community, Keith Taylor. Keith was on the Campaign Committee and a major donor for Major Q, which funds our city's public safety. Keith was a founding member and the first president of the Friends of Morro Bay Fire. He stood up during every general comment at council meeting for years. And he had one mission and one mission only, and that was to advocate for the fire department. And I think that because of him, the progress, you know, moved along very well. He helped raise funds for the rescue squad, radios, and other apparatus that were not funded through the city. His constant presence at those meetings made a huge difference. He was recognized in 2012 as Morro Bay Citizen of the Year. He was a member of the Morro Bay Car Show Committee, and he was a Marine Corps veteran and a very dear friend. And with that, I'd like to take a moment of silence. Thank you. And with that, if I can ask our fire chief to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you very much. Closed session report. Mr. Newmeyer?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No closed session items to report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Newmeyer. And that will be because closed session is tomorrow. Thank you. With that, I will go to Mayor and Councilmember reports, announcements, and presentations. And I'm going to lead off, which I don't normally do, but I have a whole list of things. So since we were here October 24th, I have attended the downtown Halloween party that was put on by the merchants, city staff, and service clubs. Thank you to everybody who participated. It was wonderful. It was very well attended. I had an RTA meeting, toured the Island Street Panorama Project with residents out there and the city manager, participated in a panel for the Central Coast Offshore Wind Session at the San Luis County. There were over 500 in attendance via in the chambers at the San Luis County and on Zoom. We met with a consultant for offshore wind support, visited the fire station for Season of Hope, which is ongoing, so I encourage all of you in the community to drop off toys and food, attended the economic forecast at Madonna with the rest of the council members, staff, and some of the people in the audience I see here, attended the Community Foundation Morro Bay Things fundraiser, in which they were sharing that they have donated $600,000 over the last 20 years, attended the Planning Commission meeting, met with Assemblymember Addus, attended Councilmember Landrum's workshop, and attended a startup for a new organization in our area, which will be their ninth chapter for Coastal Conservation Association, which is sport and recreation fishing. Coming up, we have December 1st, the tree lighting down at City Park, December 2nd, the Lighted Boat Parade, December 4th through the 6th, which I'm sure you'll hear more about, the Carolene Cops, and December 4th through the 10th, the World Surf League competition. And with that, I will look to my left.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to say I don't have any comments. However, of course, everyone knows there is always something I find. And I'll keep it really short. I did attend a lot of the events that the mayor did just announce, and I just want to give a shout out to my husband, who's on the board for the Estero Bay Community Foundation. I know all too well how hard all of our organizations work here in the city of Morro Bay and the county of Slow to work really hard for our children, to make sure that they have the ability to play sports and to participate in the world of art, those sorts of things, to have adequate childcare that's safe, all of those things that the Estero Bay Community Foundation helps provide for those who can't afford it. So, you know, I just wanted to give a huge shout out to them. In 35 years, I believe, that they've been going strong. And so that's a huge, huge accomplishment. And I'll end it there.
I wanted to give a shout out and appreciation for the Morro Bay Fire Department, working in conjunction with Cal Fire for containing that 47-acre fire that was really too close for comfort. I don't know if any of you saw the pictures, but it got a little too close to us. So, thank you. Looking forward to the holidays. Some of the things that the mayor just mentioned are some of my favorite things of the year that we do here in Morro Bay, so I'm looking forward to all of that. The mayor also mentioned the Central Coast Forecast. I really appreciated being there with all of my colleagues and members of staff. It was quite alarming at one point in the meeting to hear that we were, I believe, the third most expensive in terms of cost of living in the state of California. So, you know, that's really something to check when we're looking at all the development, housing, all the things that we have before us. So, and also, lastly, with the Design District Committee forum that happened on November 2nd, it was a full house. I think we had like 60 people there. It was absolutely helpful. All the information that we received from the community, thank you so much for those of you who are out here. I think we're there, and those of you at home who also came. It's greatly appreciated to have that kind of input as we move forward with that committee. Thank you.
Councilmember Barton?
Let's see. I had the pleasure of attending a roadway safety planning workshop. Thank you, Greg. Also, the Integrated Waste Management Authority meeting in Slow and the RAC meeting, Water Resources Advisory Committee at the Slow Library. So, those are mine.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum?
Yes, I recently had the pleasure of attending a sound bath session at Let's Get Tuned on Market Street. That's the city's tenant there. And I want to let everyone know that Natalie and John have put in tons of work to transform the space and have created a beautiful environment at their studio. And I can report, though, it may feel like not much is happening at the moment. When we talked the next day, my girlfriend and I both had had the most amazing night's sleep, so I think that's priceless. Councilmember Edwards and I participated in the downtown public meeting, and then also, we had a subcommittee meeting recently, last week. And one highlight was, we were visited by the new owner of the Bay Theater, Cameron, who's a young film graduate, film school graduate, who loves movies and is very enthusiastic about the potential of the theater, and he's excited to be in Morro Bay. We are very lucky to have the theater end up with someone, so in line with what we all appreciate and have enjoyed. So, I know I will be sure to support his efforts. And with Councilmember Barton, I attended the Traffic Safety Workshop held by the Public Works Department last week at the community center. I counted only eight residents in attendance, though, other than the consultants and staff and the two of us. But the overarching message I got was that people feel residential traffic on some streets is too fast and would like something done about that. The streets that I remember mentioned were Ironwood, Kern, and Piney Way. And also, a side note, I found it really interesting that there was no mention of the 41 and Main Street intersection as a traffic safety issue. And then I held, lastly, I held my second town hall meeting on Sunday at the community center, and the subject was offshore wind. There were nearly 70 people in attendance, including our mayor and KSBY News. I was amazed at how many people had done research on the subject. I learned a lot. There were people from all around the county, as well as a couple from the Bay Area. And my observation was that of all the people who spoke anyways, there were many who did. Only one resident was in favor of offshore wind in our area, and that there's a lot of concern about the prospect. And I would like to thank Mrs. Kimball, our city manager, and also Kirk and Coral from the Rec Department, with a special shout out to Eli and Nathan for graciously allowing me the use of the space in which to hold these.
Thank you, Councilmember Landrum. With that, I will go to the city manager. Nothing. Thank you very much. We will move on to our presentation. And this evening, we have Jeff Buckingham with us with Astound Business Solutions for presentation.
Well, good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Wixom, and city staff, and citizens of Morro Bay. I'm Jeff Buckingham. I have with me some of our team from Astound, who's been building fiber optic network throughout the city. John is our senior construction manager. Justin is the actual manager who works a lot of the construction throughout the city. Juan Carlos is a person who goes and visits everybody's house to see if you'd be interested in using the fiber. And Ryan Levens is on our commercial sales team and is also a member of the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce Board. I want to tell you a little bit about Astound. Astound is the sixth-largest telecommunications company in the United States, has services throughout various parts of the country. And the way Astound ended up here in San Luis Obispo, as many of you know, I've been in the telecommunications business here since the early 1980s with Call America and some of our successor companies. We worked with, partnered with Tim Williams at Digital West, started building fiber throughout parts of San Luis Obispo County. And we got to a point where we just could see that we couldn't build the fiber that we knew people were going to need without the funding that a big company would provide. But the interesting part with Tim and I was, we really didn't like big companies. So, we met the folks at Astound and really liked the team. And they kind of said to us, well, hey, how's it going raising that money to build all that fiber? How do you like those money guys? And we said, well, we don't really like them very much. And they said, well, yeah, you know, if you ever want to work with us, you know, we've raised the money, and we are interested in the Central Coast. And so, we had an opportunity to work together with them on a few things and said, hey, you know, we really like these people. So, that's kind of how Astound came to the Central Coast. And we chose to work with Morro Bay as one of the two cities that we first wanted to build out fiber to the entire city, just because of our relationship with Morro Bay. We had already worked with the city to build a network between the locations. And we were familiar with the city. We had a lot of customers in the city over the years. And the infrastructure in Morro Bay is conducive to building out a fiber network. You know, it's a fairly compact city, and we were comfortable with the people we would work with, because obviously, if you're going to go into a big construction project in the city, you've got to have a good partner in the city to make sure that things run smoothly. So, one of the most fun things I did in the last couple of years was walk into Scott Collins' office with a couple of us from Astound, and we said, hey, Scott, how'd you like it if we built out fiber to your whole city? And he just kind of looked at us and said, well, what do I have to do? And we said, nothing, except just work with us, and we'll build it out. And of course, most of the other city managers throughout California and the United States are all working on big, long projects, trying to figure out how to do this. And we still laugh about that when I see Scott around, because it was such a fun thing to be able to do, just walk in and say, here's this plan coming to fruition. So, just to give you an idea of the services that are offered, you know, we offer service. Right now, there's about 4,000 homes that are passed, about 400 customers that are connected so far. And we connect more every day. And this just shows a little bit of the different programs that they can use. Of course, the part worksite about fiber is that the speeds of fiber to past internet are pretty much infinite. And even the speeds that we offer here, although they're very fast, probably faster than most people even need, as time goes on in the future, those can be upgraded as needed. The interesting thing is, a lot of our customers are buying the fiber because it's less expensive. And, you know, and that's one thing I talked to Juan Carlos about a lot of, you know, do they realize how cool it is, how fast it can be and all that? And he said, yeah, you know, some people do. But, you know, a lot of it is, the fiber service is newer, it's more reliable, and, you know, it's actually less expensive than the service that they've had now. So, you know, for any folks who are interested, they can always talk to Juan Carlos and go to our website and check and see if their addresses are set up. This shows a map of the whole city. And one of the questions we had today from you all was, what parts of the city do we have up and running, and what parts don't we? So, the areas in green are actually all up and running right now. The areas kind of in the tan color are areas that are under construction. And so, in those areas that are green, there can be places where we're still trying to figure out how to get service to a particular building or particular groups of buildings. But those green areas are all turned up. And we've kind of split the city into two areas. We call Phase 1, which is the southern part, and Phase 2, which is the northern. And so, what you can see here, a little bit larger picture, this aerial construction permit for that whole area, this is actually kind of an important point, and it's another good thing about working with the city of Morro Bay, is that it's important to have a good partner. This aerial permit, John was able to recently work with city staff to convert this into what we call a maintenance permit. It's down the weeds a little bit, but if you have a fiber optic network, it's important to be able to get out and work on it without having to go get a separate permit every time somebody needs something fixed. And so, by working with the city and establishing the right parameters, we're in a position where we can now go out and work on things as needed without having to go back every single time, which is really important. Most of the aerial construction is done. There's some parts being worked on. There's some underground construction going on now. And through the rest of this year, we'll have some final street sidewalk restoration, you know, and you've probably seen in your neighborhoods, there's places where there may be some temporary patchwork or things like that to get fixed. And there'll be some new underground construction in some of those tan areas that'll be completed before the end of the year. Phase 2 is the northern part of Morro Bay. Again, all those green areas are turned up and ready to go. The area to the west of Highway 1, the Cloisters area and the residential area north of that, we're still trying to figure that one out. There's some significant archaeological issues in that area, and so, we're trying to figure out the best approach to be able to get in there in a way that will actually make sense. But that's a very similar approach. One thing I should mention, too, on going back to Phase 1, the Embarcadero area, it's probably the most challenging area for us, and we're working on plans to try to find a way to get into the Embarcadero without having to dig the whole place up. And so, we've got some ideas we'll be talking to staff about. We have our Juan Carlos Herrera, who's with us here today, and his partner, Michael Bourbon. Those are the folks who are out walking the streets every day, talking to people, and they're available. And we certainly are available to answer any questions you may have or anything else you want to cover.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that. And this replay's on Channel 20, so I think everybody will have an opportunity to get the phone numbers and look you up. So, thank you for that. And we appreciate you bringing the fiber optics and moving us forward.
Well, we really appreciate being able to work with Morro Bay. This has been great. And even though I can kind of see Morro Bay from my place, I don't have any fiber in my house. I hope someday I'll be able to have what we have here in Morro Bay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you all for coming this evening, too, from the company. We appreciate it. And thank you to our Public Works Department, along with Eric Rideo, I think, who's been working with you. So, thank you for that. Circling back real quick, before we move on to public comment, Mr. Shafon, Director Shafon, is the information from the Offshore Wind Summit up on our page yet? And is there also information on the Cal Poly November 29th meeting? Or will there be?
Let me take a look. I will take a look.
So, can we make sure those things are listed, those links?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, just to keep everybody in the community current with what's going on out there. Before we move to public comment, I would like council's permission to pull an item this evening, so that those of you who are speaking on items not on the agenda will know that we're pulling it in case there was anything you wanted. I'd like to pull item C3 and move it to January. Our agenda's very loaded this evening, and C3 is a review of our goals and is not time-sensitive. So, with council approval, yes, yes, yes. Thank you. With that, we'll pull C3 and move it to our January meeting. So, if you had an interest in talking on the goals, it would be during general public comment. Thank you. With that, I have speaker slips to start out with. And first up is going to be Judy Brown, followed by Jenny Jones.
Good evening, everybody. Hi, council. Hi, neighbors. I'm sorry to start us off on a bummer, but we have a problem in our neighborhood at 995 Alessandro Street. So, I'm going to do a very brief overview and then let the rest of the neighbors who are affected by this speak as well. So, Terry and I live half a block from where this is going on, not quite ground zero, but we do get all the fallout from it. So, we have a neighbor named John Fort, who lives at 995 Alessandro Street. And that house has been a problem for decades. So, here's the latest things that are going on that have gone on there. We have package theft. We have, John was the guy that was following the UPS truck, stealing the packages last couple of years ago. We have drug manufacturing and trafficking. This is really a problem. Property fires endangering the neighbors. They have an out-of-control dog that's viciously attacked the neighbors on their own property. And we will have one nice neighbor here to talk about that this evening, because it happened to her, and she had to use a trash can to defend herself. Endless dubiously obtained nonoperational and out-of-registration or potentially stolen plate vehicles and trailers being parked and worked on in the public right of way. M80s set off directly beneath neighbors' windows to retaliate and intimidate for calls to the PD. We have racial epithets hurled at neighbors and their young children. Not cool. Shouting and physical fights in the street between the residents of 995, which is a revolving cast of characters, and they all have aliases. So, we never really know who's who down there. And, you know, just an obnoxious one, a motorcycle revved and gunned every night and early morning, for which John Fort has no license, having had it taken away for numerous violations. So, our PD has done an incredible job. Thank you, Chief Watkins and your crew. I can't thank them enough. There have also been other agencies, such as Gang Task Force, Animal Services, and yet, John Fort continues to be an ongoing threat to the neighborhood for well over a decade. So, what can be done beyond what's already being done to stop it once and for all? Thank you, everyone.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Jones. I'm a homeowner at Alessandro Street near Kings. Yeah, it's some good news and some bad news. The bad news is all of what has already been mentioned, trash, smells, noise, a trained escapee attack dog. It's a drug house. And this is a photo from KSBY from 2018, when these people were arrested for operating a drug house. I don't know why it didn't go anywhere from there, because at least two of these people are still on premises, still doing everything that they were doing before, it appears, and more. So, despite all of these efforts that everyone here has been making, it continues its rapid decline every year, every month now. It's getting worse and worse, because nobody is stopping it. It will keep getting worse until someone or something stops it. That's the bad news. The good news is, it's all at this one address, 995 Alessandro Street, and as mentioned, John Fort. I don't know if he's the owner. The property is deeded to, it's in trust. It's being held in trust under the name Ronald Fort, who has an address in Lemoore. So, I don't know. But I'm today here asking the city to hold the trust, the trustee, responsible and accountable. I really feel that these folks need to go. They need to go. And I'm asking that this property achieve a very simple and clear goal. It's really simple. One, evict the current occupants. I don't even want to call them tenants. I don't know what they are. Two, clean up the property. There is dog crap everywhere. It's really bad. Three, place new noncriminal tenants. Or, hey, how about sell it to some law-abiding property owners? To our city officials, in alignment with your stated mission of a safe and sanitary city, can Morro Bay's mayor, city council, and city attorneys help us achieve this peaceful outcome? I beg of you. Please do. Cleaning up and clearing out this property cannot come too soon. Do you guys want the picture?
Thank you. Housekeeping note. For those of you who are looking at the screen, AGP was not able to show it live. It is being televised live, so when you're speaking, they're seeing all of us, just not in-house. Linda Winters, followed by Barbara Alward? 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 Sorry.
Good evening. Wow. That's a hard act to follow. My name is Linda Winters, and I live in the same mobile home park for the last 30 years. One thing that was failed to be mentioned in the long list of activities, Morro Bay's Community Thanksgiving Dinner. Yeah. Last year, we only packed out for 800. You know, fairly insignificant. Okay. One thing I wanted to talk about in the mobile home parks was, 10 months and five days ago, the mobile home parks were flooded. For those who experienced those floodwaters, we have lots of questions for the city. For those of you who know anything about me, I document everything, either in writing, or with pictures, or with videos, or all of the above. In this case, the flood on January 9th of 2023, I have documentation in all of the above-mentioned forums. The most poignant was a video that I took of the floodwaters rushing into our park with an absolute vengeance. Most of the people were given a brief warning to get out. Some of us, myself included, chose to stay and witnessed the devastation of many of the homes and lives. I must mention the city fire department that came to rescue one of our disabled residents, taking him and his two therapy cats. Yes, I said cats. He was taken to the community building, where there were cots set up for those that needed a place to spend the night. And they also spent an extra night there before the roads were clear enough to bring that person back home. There were also some other residents from our park that came to the community building, but there weren't any cots for them to sleep in, so they slept in chairs. Those people came back to their homes to so much damage, they had a hard time recovering. so much damage, they had a hard time recovering. One woman didn't, unfortunately. She died on January 25th. Now we have not one, not two, but three major rain events coming between January 9th and March 14th. I very much want to thank the city Public Works, city fire department, and the police department, and the city council for helping the people on Main Street to help recover. Now, the big question is, what do we do next? Rain is coming. Lots of rain that could produce a whole new flood event. Now, my question to the city, will the city provide a place for people to come if evacuation is necessary? A safe, warm, dry place to shelter anyone until the flood dangers recede? This can be, can this be done for the city residents of More Bay? I hope the city can answer that question and other questions to inform all of us in the flood zone if we can depend on the city to help their own residents. I thank you very much.
Hello, everybody. Hello, council, and thanks for this opportunity. My name is Barbara Alward and I live at 996 Alessandro. We have problems in the area. This is definitely happening. Judy, cover that very well. I have a pressing problem with Luna, the 90-pound, at least 90-pound pit bull. In case you're thinking I'm picking on the pit bull breed, I am a dog lover. I've taken biscuits to Luna. I've also tried to keep a civil relationship with my neighbors at 995 Alessandro, where Luna and his owner, John Fort, live. I'm terrified of Luna. After the last attack, my kids came over the next day and put in fence panels and a gate. I do feel safer, but when I leave the house, get the mail, put the trash out, get in my car, and I'm a doordasher, so I'm in and out of my car a lot. I have to carefully watch my surroundings and hope if Luna is out, I see him before he sees me. Luna is out at random times, and I've been reporting this dog to animal control for two years. This dog has come after me twice in one year. On November 3rd, just recently, I was in my front yard moving a heavy ceramic pot. Hearing a noise, I looked up and I saw John Fort with Luna at his side, no leash, no restraint. The dog saw me, growled, and took off like a shot directly for me. I had nothing to defend myself with, but I did have my hand on that pot. In seconds, the dog arrived. I swung the pot in front, made contact with the dog, closing my eyes. Both attacks, I can't handle it. I closed my eyes. The dog takes up off the street. John Fort stood and watched, making no attempt to restrain the dog. At this point, John tells me Luna doesn't bite, and I had to remind him a year ago that actually Luna bit me and perforated, punctured my hand, my right hand. That encounter with Luna took place when I was entering the street to move my car. The 995 folks were moving large RVs, and I feared my car was in the way and subject to getting hit. It's happened. I'm walking to my car, and Luna, his on leash, comes at me, dragging the leash holder, not John Fort, at me. The guy was just pulled. Luna pinned me against my car and punctured my hand. I reported, I've reported everything to animal control. This dog has a list. So now I realize, I've been doing a lot of reading about the laws, and Luna is basically a free dog until he does more bodily harm to people. But let's hope this does not involve the school bus stop a block away. We actually have families with children on Alessandro, but you never see them because we all know how unsafe it is where we live. Thanks.
Next up is Harmony Cranes, followed by Terry Simons.
Good evening, council. My name is Harmony Cranes, and I'm a resident of Alessandro Street. Neighbors feel intimidated to speak up about the disturbances in the 900 block of Alessandro Street due to retaliation from the occupants, as I myself experienced on September 9th of this year. I was in my living room with my young children when a resident of 995 Alessandro Street, John Fort, shouted at me from the end of my driveway that I was an effing N-word, twice, for calling the cops on him. There had been a lot of shouting at his residents that day. However, it was not me who had phoned the police. Things escalated from there. I witnessed four separate physical altercations in the street over the next hour from my window. I fearfully watched. Would I get stuck in the crossfire again? This time, I did call for help. I'm grateful for the police response that day. Two residents wound up arrested and booked for disturbing the peace and witness intimidation, of which I'm the victim. The following evening after the neighbor was released from jail, there were multiple large fireworks shot off in the street near my residence. It was terrifying. Nobody could got any sleep that night, much less the next few nights, as we waited for the next act of retaliation. Excessively revving their motorcycles, burnouts, racing in the street, allowing their loose dog to chase neighbors, drug activity, and fighting are daily disturbances that neighbors fear reporting due to stories like mine. Meanwhile, we can't use our yards, driveways, or walk the streets safely. I worry about my vehicle and property being damaged. I can't have packages delivered due to theft. My kids can't have friends over. I can't even answer my door. The neighborhood knows no rest with this troublesome property on the block. And by the way, all of the property values on this street are reduced by at least $50,000 to $75,000 due to this nuisance property. Please help us restore the peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Terry Simons, Alessandro Streets and More Bay. I'm a frequent speaker here, so you know that generally I'm quick to point out when there are problems. But generally, I try to have solutions for those problems. You've heard the complaints, issues, problems in our neighborhood, at the risk of looking like the organizer of this response, which I possibly could be. I find myself experiencing this from a half a block away every time the motorcycle that's a party to this disturbance is revved up early in the morning, late at night. My wife becomes terrified. It doesn't bother me because I have sidearms and shotguns, and I'm ready to stop an invader if it should happen. I'm not happy with having to have that personal level of defense. We're looking at trying to go to the district attorney's office, and this is not an indictment against the city. The city has done everything they possibly can to help us, I believe. But this has risen to a level beyond what More Bay can really deal with. And what we would here tonight like you to do is authorize your various departments that can help us to write letters of support so that we can go to the district attorney and have them use their superior agency status and other connections to help stop this problem from continuing. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, public comment is open. I have no more speaker slips. Public comment is open. Come on up.
Tim Cleeth, owner of Rhapsody in View Boutique Hotel on 2790 North Main. And I just want to come here to share the fact that it's going to open in the next month. And we hope it'll be a really jewel in the crown of More Bay and would love to participate in the community. As a hydrogeologist, I even helped put in the seawater wells way, way, way back when. So it's been a long time when I've worked with the city of More Bay, and Cleeth, our hydrogeologist, continues to do so. But this is a new avenue, and my kids are going to be running it. And anyways, I want to tell you all that you're all welcome to join as we open. And take a look and see what we got. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? AGP?
Hi, Madam Mayor. We have one person in the queue that wishes to speak, Ginger Machado. I'll go ahead and allow her to speak.
Thank you.
Hello. Can you hear me, council?
Hi, Ginger. Yes.
Hi. I wanted to speak on the challenges with the homeless population in the Creekside area off of Quintana Road. I'm a resident of More Bay and I'm the general manager of Fitness Works across the street from the homeless population there in the creek. And I've spoken to the owner of that parcel of vacant land, and they've asked if we were able to post private property, no trespassing, no loitering signs along his private property. As we were able to do that, and we did that a number of weeks ago. He also asked us if we could call More Bay Police Department when we saw any homeless encampments there and request that they assist in enforcing those no trespassing, no loitering signs. My concern is this, that if that goes, if we do that for the property owner, since it is also a challenge for our business and the other businesses in the area, that homeless population with litter and sewage problems and the like, that that encampment will, I'm concerned that the encampment might migrate to the sidewalk area on Quintana Road immediately abutting the property of Fitness Works and the other retail establishments there. I've seen that type of encampments on sidewalks, on concrete, in both San Francisco and Los Angeles. I've seen those personally. And today, when I was surveying the area, I noticed someone sleeping on the sidewalk, right attached to, an alcove attached to the post office boxes for our property, for Fitness Works, rather. And so I don't want to migrate an entire population to fill up the entire sidewalk. And so I'm asking that city council, please consider passing an ordinance, if we don't already have one, that would prohibit camping on public easements, sidewalks in the city. And that way, we can get support from the police department to move off those encampments there across Quintana Road. Also, I don't know if it's, if you are aware that there is a self-proclaimed and recognized mayor of the creek community. His name is Eric. He wears overalls, has bushy hair, I'm told. My husband discovered this last week when he walked up and down the creek in an effort to help identify and locate the two lost junior high boys that had run away from home. And so he was just compelled to see if they were in the creek. So my husband walked the whole length of the creek, asking if they had seen the two boys. And he met and spoke with many people down there, one of whom asked if he had met the mayor. And he later then did meet the mayor closer up to the Burger King establishment, the man I described, Eric, who is the self-proclaimed mayor. So I didn't know we had two mayors in More Bay, and concerned about that as well. And so that is my request to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ginger. Public comment is open.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you, council. And thank you all for your service. It's much appreciated. Mary Camperini, I've lived in More Bay for approximately eight years, and my comments are very similar to the last person's comments. I sometimes work late at night and have to pick up my mail late in the evening at the UPS store. And after hours, usually it's not been a problem, but over the last year, I've run into several episodes, and one in which I've had to contact the police officers in More Bay. And it was regarding the homeless population. One time, when I said no to somebody who asked me for money, he became very verbally aggressive and physically was acting out. And I actually locked myself in the UPS store, and I was scared. I don't intimidate very easily. But that's when I called More Bay Police, and thankfully, he left and everything was just fine. But there was a few other incidents like that, where I was trying to take things out of my vehicle, and somebody came into my space and was touching my car and coming like this close to me. And when I asked him to back away, he was not receptive to my cues. That was intimidating. And then, most recently, having to go through a cloud of smoke for people that are not following the smoking ordinance, again, in that same area on the sidewalks and in the parking lot in front of the UPS store. I don't know if signs would help, with symbols for maybe people that don't read, that no smoking. But the homelessness problem is a huge problem. I wish I was coming here with an answer tonight, but I want to do whatever I can and to keep the conversation going of what can we do? Because our beautiful town is really, it's really a shame to see what's happening, and it just breaks my heart. So thank you so much for letting me speak.
I'm John Hesch. I've lived in this area all my life, 67 years. And I saw this article in Calcoast News just today, just this afternoon, about 4:00. And I was just incredulous that the biggest deal going on right now in this town is abandoned shopping carts? Really? So, like the rest of the community, I've been frustrated the last few years watching this homeless encampment grow in the ditch that, when I was a young boy, we skateboarded in. You know, we cleaned it up, and we skateboarded in it. Now, it's, it's an atrocious mess. So, in preparation to come down here, because I don't come to the city council meetings, I don't speak publicly, but this has been, this has been a pressing issue in my mind for a long time, like the rest of the town, I think. So I went up there about 4:45, got out of my van, and I walked from Burger King down to Couch Potato, but not on the street. And how many of you in our city staff and council people have walked that area? Raise your hands. Have you gone down into the camp itself? Okay. Well, I did. I walked into every camp that I could access today, this evening, looking for shopping carts, these nuisance shopping carts that are the biggest problem we have right now. I found three of them. None of them up on the street where they could offend anybody driving or walking. There was one that was usable up at the Burger King end, and two more that were pretty much destroyed down at the far end. But I, I think, I think this is the wrong direction to go, to put the burden onto the businesses that own these carts that are stolen, so crime has been committed. I think that lands in the lap of the police department to deal with, to cause businesses to endure additional costs that they're going to pass off to the rest of the community. Just puts the burden onto all the rest of us. I don't think that's the way to go about it. So I found three shopping carts. Today, in my driving, I was on Main Street between 41 and my home down at South Main. I was on More Bay Boulevard and Harbor Street and Quintana. Those are the only three shopping carts that I found in town. I really can't believe that we're going to waste our time creating an ordinance about these, these abandoned shopping carts when there's another way to deal with it. It's, it's a law that's been broken. Deal with the offenders. You know, one last comment. With this ditch, I don't have a solution at the top of my head. With this ditch, I don't have a solution at the top of my head. I know everybody's grappling with it. But I've often wondered, how long would it take for me, somebody who's been a resident all his life, if I set up a tent in the city park, how long would I last before the police came along and arrested me?
Thank you, John. Anyone else for public comment?
Howdy, friends and neighbors, as well as the City Council, mayor, and peripherals. I was not planning on speaking this evening. However, after listening to public comment, I did feel somewhat compelled to come up here and state an alternate perspective. Just yesterday, I believe it was, I peered out my window to find a somewhat disheveled-looking woman with lots of large bags staring up at me from my driveway. She was looking for our neighbors who recently left. They live two houses over. They had lots of very loud fun, and one of them was prone to illegal fireworks, which we were not crazy about. I personally never had any problems with these people. In fact, I let her take a shower. We had lunch together, chatted. She left, he was fine. I'm always nice to these people, even when they cause problems for me personally. One of the tenants, tenants, if you will, would occasionally be seen wandering around my property at about 2:00 a.m. However, I never leave anything of any value outside because I recognize if I do, it will probably get taken. As well, incidentally, the area around Burger King, the Dollar Tree, and Albertson's is one of my favorite places to take a stroll after midnight. I never have any problems with these people. In fact, sometimes I have nice conversations with them. If they are walking around waving their arms around like crazy people, I turn and walk the other way because I know better than to put myself in a situation where I might have to do something potentially aggressive. I do carry pepper spray oftentimes because I don't want to have to put myself in a situation where I have to do something unkind to another human being. For instance, take away their freedom by calling the police and having them sent to jail. It's not something I really approve of. And if I were to do something like that, especially if I did it repeatedly, I would end up with a bit of a reputation. And having said reputation, I'd be far more likely to have my stuff stolen, my property graffitied. I don't know. Maybe somebody would abuse my cat when I wasn't looking. I don't like staying silent in the face of what I view as inhumane treatment. Not suggesting that we allow people to have their way with us and do whatever they want. I do believe in sticking up for ourselves. But I also believe it is far more important that we make sure we are doing it in a right, just, and kind way. I may not always live by it, but I try to achieve compassion and mercy in all things. Thank you, and have a nice evening.
Can I ask that you all refrain from clapping and just wave, please? Thank you. Public comment is still open for anyone wishing to speak on items not on the agenda. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Wendy Dyer. I am a year-plus resident of Morro Bay after spending half of my time here between the valley and Portland growing up. I didn't mean to be speaking today, but I came to thank Councilmember Landrum for all of the public listening of the last week, and for Mayor Wixom for attending all of the topics around important issues for Morro Bay citizens. And I wanted to also take a moment to thank Astound for being here, specifically Juan Carlos. What their presentation did not explain, and I felt compelled to tell you, is that this is one of the most disability and senior-friendly companies that I've had the privilege of working with here. I appear to be able-bodied and able-minded. I am neither. Due to a long series of physical, cognitive, and psychological traumas incurred during the pandemic, my brain and my body does not work the way normal people's brains and bodies work. Juan Carlos came to my house on two separate occasions and hand-held me through the things that my brain and body would not allow me to do so that I could have the connectivity that has allowed me to attend these meetings, to be involved with the fight against wind farms and to attend Friday meeting groups. I wouldn't have had that connectivity if I hadn't had somebody who came into my house and said, "Okay, you're clearly a very smart person, and right now, you're struggling to read and write and to use technology because you have a brain injury. Let me help you with that." "Okay, you're a poor person. You don't want to be living down in that ditch like other people. You've been there before. Let me help you by getting you connected to affordability programs." "Oh, wow, you're sensitive to EMFs. Huh, I've been hearing that from a lot of people since 5G." Instead of making me feel like I was a crazy person for being weirded out by the new cellular technology and all of the things that I'm sensitive to electromagnetically, Juan Carlos hired a special tech to come to my house and help install my internet in a way so that I could still sleep at night instead of having to unplug the internet. They've really, really gone above and beyond the call of duty. And it's made me feel less like a customer of a huge corporation like AT&amp;T or Comcast, and more like a resident of a small town with a company that cares about me. And so I just wanted to share that positive experience because it echoes the positive experience I've had in being in Morro Bay to recover from the traumas of the pandemic that brought me here. So, thank you all so much, and thank you for our police in advance for helping out with these neighbors with their problems, some other neighbors, because it sounds like a really awful situation.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on items not on the agenda?
Hello, Rob Fraser. Three properties on Main Street that got flooded. Thank you, City of Morro Bay, for helping me out. Number two, I'm so lucky, I own 600 Quintana. I realize it's a problem we all have to deal with. Every day, I put carts away. Every day, I walk the DSS building that I own and make sure it's clean. We need to work on this together. You know, it's too intense for any one organization to deal with. So me, as a property owner up there, I do everything I can. Thanks, City of Morro Bay.
Anyone else for public comment? AGP, anyone else on the queue?
Yes, Mayor, we have one raised hand from a Judy Lynn setting. I'm going to allow them to talk.
Thank you.
You should be able to talk now. Judy, are you there? Judy, are you there? Hello? Seems like we're having an audio issue on their end, unfortunately.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Please know that for Ginger at home and those of you who are here, we do have a city team that is working on options regarding our unhoused population and looking at ordinances. But there are many, many, many state laws that govern actions we can take. And hopefully, we will be bringing some items, maybe in the next month, to the community and some opportunities we may have to address some of those. And I would also, at this time, ask our city attorney to make any comments on the concerns on Alessandro Street. Mr. Newmeyer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I heard all the public comments, and I definitely will meet with the city manager and the police chief, and we'll talk about different legal options that are available to the city to address this issue.
Thank you for that. And so hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to circle back with the residents and help with any way we can at this level. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. I will open public comment on items on the consent agenda.
Good evening, Betty Winholtz. I want to address item A3, which is regarding the trolley contract that's going out for one year. And I just wanted to add that I hope that you'll not just suggest to staff that they do the RTA, but they look beyond that to other companies that may be involved with that, as was done in 2015 when this company came on board. I think it would be nice to know, maybe there aren't any other options, but I think it's worth looking at to see where the best deal can come from. Thank you.
Anyone else for items on the consent agenda? AGP?
There are no raised hands.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment on the consent agenda. Thank you, Ms. Winholtz, for your comments, and I'm sure staff took notes on that. I will look for a motion for approval of items A1 through A7.
I'll move approval of items A1 through A7.
In a second, please.
My second.
Thank you. I have a first, Councilmember Barton, and a second from Councilmember Edwards. Voice vote, please, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. With that, we will move on to item B1, which is going to be our Community Development Department.
We're going to get Cindy set up here and we'll have a presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. It's nice to be here tonight. This item before the City Council is a request for amendments to the city's zoning code coastal implementation plan. It also includes a request for a general plan, local coastal program, land use map amendment, and zoning map amendment, as well as adoption of objective design standards as an amendment to the city's zoning code. On the screen before you is just an outline of the presentation that I will go through. And just to start out with some brief background, it was one year ago, the City Council adopted amendments to the city's zoning code through adoption of ordinance 654. That comprehensively updated the city's zoning code, repealing and replacing Title 17 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code. And then, following adoption of that ordinance, the city submitted an amendment to, an LCP amendment application to the Coastal Commission for certification. We received responses from the Coastal Commission requesting multiple edits to the adopted zoning code prior to proceeding with certification for that LCP amendment. And so since that point, the Planning Commission reviewed the proposed requested City Council, oh, sorry, proposed coastal edits, as well as city-initiated amendments. And I will go through those in subsequent slides. And then, following that, during this process, the City Council reviewed objective design standards as a zoning code amendment at its October 10th meeting, and did not take action on that zoning code amendment at that hearing, but rather requested that the objective design standards be brought back when the zoning code amendments be brought forward. And so we are here tonight to talk about both of those amendments. So, the Planning Commission reviewed the amendments to the zoning code at public hearings in September and in October. At the October 3rd meeting, the Planning Commission forwarded a favorable recommendation to the council for adoption of the zoning code amendments. And in addition to the amendments that are before you in the ordinance 662, are these two additional requests to be included in the amendments. And the first one is reducing maximum building height in the downtown community commercial zone from 37 to 30 feet. And then, secondly, lighting standards. There was a request by the Planning Commission to provide clarification on illumination standards. And that, both of these edits have been made in the zoning code at the sections on the screen. And before I go any further, I would like to clarify that the, because of the large number of pages of the zoning code, that document, just for the record, is available on the city's website at morrobay.ca.gov, under the Planning Division website, and also under the Plan Morro Bay project website. The Planning Commission had a subsequent public hearing at November 7th, and that was the recommendation where the Planning Commission adopted a resolution forwarding a favorable recommendation for various zoning map amendments. And that is to provide consistency, to have that legal consistency between the city's adopted land use plan map and the zoning map. So as part of the amendment package that's before you, the Coastal Commission amendment request that we received really related to ensuring consistency with the Coastal Act and consistency with Plan Morro Bay, which is the city's combined adopted 2021 general plan local coastal program. The city, the Coastal Commission requested that the city approve these amendments for efficiency prior to proceeding with a certification hearing. There were multiple edits that we received from the Coastal Commission. In the amended document that is on the city's website, all of the amendments, because of the volume of amendments, they are shown in red track changes. All of those edits that are being requested as a city-initiated amendment are shown in blue font, just to distinguish the difference between the two sources of amendments. And then, in addition, staff did prepare and present to the Planning Commission a detailed spreadsheet summary that's specified by page number and chapter, the reason for each of the amendments, and then a corresponding staff response. And then, so the second half of this amendment package is the city-initiated amendments. And these are really technical cleanup amendments where there was, after a year of using the zoning code, the 2022 zoning code, there was a need to provide further clarity on standards, miscellaneous refinements, some minor updates to the sign regulation standards, and then any necessary updates to state legislation. And then, again, in the second bullet, you'll see on the screen the multiple chapters where there were miscellaneous amendments made. And then likewise, the spreadsheet summary that is an attachment to the staff report includes detail on these amendments. Another portion of the proposed amendments, and this is discussed in detail in the staff report, is since the 2022 zoning code adoption, the city has received numerous fencing complaints regarding fence heights and relation to fences that were constructed long ago and fences that have non-conforming heights. And so to remedy the number of complaints that the city is receiving, staff has included in the staff report a recommendation to grandfather-in fence heights at their existing height. So the first bullet here shows for the council what our current standards are. And these are standards specifically to fences that are located within front and corner side or street-side setbacks. In short, what it is, it's three feet if it's a solid fence, or four feet if it's 50% open. The, and as I said, the amendment would grandfather in those fences at their existing height that they are as of adoption of ordinance 662. One thing I did want to point out, since the staff report was published, the city did receive public comment today from a resident that noted that the proposed grandfathering language does not specify that open fences are included also. And so, in the staff report, there was an excerpt, this is a page from the zoning code that's on the website. And the excerpt in the staff report just showed paragraph 1A, and you can see the blue edit there that says the fence heights would be allowed. In response to the resident's public comment received, staff looked at this, and it could be construed that this grandfathering would only apply to paragraph 1A and 1B, or sorry, and not 1B. So should the council adopt ordinance 662? So, should the council adopt ordinance 662 and grandfather in these fence heights, staff's recommendation to fix this would be to duplicate the language in 1A and to add that into 1B so it looked like this, as shown on the screen. And that is for council decision during your deliberation, should you decide to proceed with that. So, I did want to point that out in response to that good public comment that we received. This next part of my presentation, these are the lists of the various parcels around town where we found some inconsistencies between the land use and the zoning map. Dog Beach is one of those, and that is for both the land use and a zoning map amendment. That was an error that was brought to staff's attention where it had always been open space, and somehow during the adoption in 2021, it got changed to agriculture. And so, I don't think we want oceanfront property to be agriculture. So, that's what that is, in case there's any question about that. But the various, these are the recommendations Planning Commission looked at on October 3. And then, these eight properties are the recommendations that the Planning Commission looked at on November 7. And then, again, all of these locations are not proposing any changes that would be inconsistent with the adopted land use plan. They are really just to bring it into conformity with what's already been adopted. Objective design standards, these are, excuse me, the objective design standards were reviewed by the Planning Commission. They forwarded that favorable recommendation to city council, and you did look at that at your October 10 meeting. If adopted, this would be incorporated as an amendment and inserted as chapter 17.31 to the zoning code. Staff did summarize some of the council questions that were presented to staff at that October 10 meeting, and I've just restated this here just for the record. These are some of the main questions that were brought up, such as where ODS projects allowed, why do they not include elevators, can images of massing and the upper floor step backs be provided, is it for affordable housing projects only, and then a request for clarification regarding parapet roofs versus screening roofs. And just to reiterate, ODS projects are allowed only in commercial or multifamily zone properties. They would only be for those housing applications where someone submits their application specifically in response to housing bills passed by the legislature. In the staff report, we did provide this image as an example to what that looks like with massing and that upper floor step back. On the top of the slide before you is an image that would show what it would look like, and this is, you know, these are hypothetical examples, but at 90% maximum area of ground floor, so that orange shaded area, what that's showing is the second floor is stepped back, and it's only 90% of the first floor at 100%. In the bottom slide, you can see there is two colors, orange and blue. The orange represents, again, this would be like in a hypothetical three-story building, but the orange would be 90% stepped back from the first floor, and then the blue square that you see, that would represent what it might look like if there was 80% maximum area of ground floor. The project zoning code amendments and ODS amendments, subject to SEQA, included in the ordinances before you tonight are the environmental findings. Staff did review this, and the recommendation is that because this is part of the programmatic EIR, that there would be no further environmental review, and that no subsequent analysis is therefore required. So, staff's recommendation is that the council review the Planning Commission recommendations, and then make two separate motions, and this is in your staff report. I've summarized them here on the screen. But before you tonight is ordinance 662, which would do two things. It would adopt the zoning code implementation plan amendments, and then also, and the zoning map amendments, and then also adopt resolution 73-23 to amend the general plan, LCP land use map. And then, the second motion would be to adopt ordinance 661, which would be adoption of the objective design, and I should say standards, not guidelines, objective design standards, ODS, and that would be as an amendment to the zoning code as chapter 1731. And so, with that, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Cindy. Council questions to my right, Councilmember Landrum?
Can you, so am I understanding the fence height part correctly, that if someone, say, had a fence that was 12 feet high, whatever it is, it's grandfathered in?
So, as written, that would technically be it if it's on private property and not located within the right-of-way, and it would just grandfather in fences as of adoption of this ordinance.
Okay. And someone wrote in about the, one of the comments, I don't know if you saw, read the public comments, about the zoning of, like, for instance, the Alder lot, and it's like that one property is being singled out to change, right? Is, can you speak on that?
Yeah.
And then, also, the elementary school property, was that changed in this, or?
It was not.
But the comment was that, could it be changed? Would that be advantageous to us to change it, or?
Okay. So, I'll take the first question first. So, on the Alder Street property, so when the city went through the update process, and we started with the general plan advisory committee, and then it went to the Planning Commission, one of the earliest things we did is develop an on-the-ground land use plan for the city, like, what are the existing on-the-ground land uses? And in, as much as possible, we tried to eliminate any issues. You know, the objective of the zoning code update was to bring the zoning code up to modern standards, but then also make it easier both for residents, residents and commercial businesses. And so, the Alder Street Hotel, we looked at that North Main area, and that was an area where it's a motel that's there, and it's been there for a long time, and looked at trying to avoid any issues where we would make people non-conforming. And so, the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and eventual adoption by the city, was to maintain that commercial use. The, and so, that was looked at as far as, it's a commercial use now, let's keep it as a commercial use. And so, tonight's item to change the zoning from RM, or residential medium, to neighborhood commercial, basically is just consistent with those land use decisions. On the elementary school property, that's always been high-density residential, and the previous zoning code that we would refer to that as R4. It was changed to the high-density residential. Planning Commission also had extensive conversations about whether or not it was appropriate to change that to something other than high-density residential. And ultimately, the decision was made that, and because of housing element, you know, ramifications, the decision was made to, there are a variety of uses that can be done there as high-density residential. It's not all school property, and let's keep it the way it is. And again, like, trying not to make any large-scale changes for those properties, and similar to Alder.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton, questions?
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards, questions?
I just wanted to say thank you, Cindy, and Mr. Graham, for this report. I really appreciated how you went back and answered some of council's questions with regards to the ODS, so that's very much appreciated. I'm going to hold off right now.
Councilmember Ford?
I'm going to echo Councilmember Edwards' comments.
Thank you. And I don't have any questions right now, but I would like to just give a shout-out to the Planning Commission also for their work on this, and taking it back, and really taking a hard look at it and their comments, so I appreciate all of their work. Public comment is open on this item, B1.
Back to regular stuff. Terry Simons, Morro Bay.
Madam Mayor, if I could, if we could formally open up-
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I forgot.
Didn't you do?
Yes, no, I did not. I'm sorry. This is a, this is a hearing item, and we're opening public comment for this hearing item. Thank you.
I thought I heard you do that, but maybe not.
Forgot the hearing.
Okay. I would concur with staff's recommendation that the fence height exception or legalizing non-conforming be included in both of the paragraphs that they showed, but I think that they might want to amend that slightly to limit it to some particular height. The concern that Councilperson Landrum had regarding a 12-foot fence, I don't know of any 12-foot fences, but I'd hate to think that they're out there. Moving on, I've had some calls from potential clients regarding their concerns that they have recently reviewed the new zoning code and have found that their property has been rezoned, or downzoned, or upzoned, depends, eliminating their future use of their property for residential if they wanted to add accessory dwelling units. Staff chose to pick a few properties for reconsideration at this point, but I don't think they did a comprehensive study of the entire community where there might be inadvertent non-conforming. So, I would hope that council would direct staff to have a grace period of, say, a year where people who find themselves unknowingly rezoned into something that has jeopardized their continued use of their property, particularly residential, and that they be given some opportunity to come to the city, hopefully without outrageous administrative fees, to request some consideration in rezoning or modification, so that they're not caught up in a situation where they have non-conforming uses in the house that they live in, and they can't add an ADU, for instance. Thank you.
Good evening, Betty Winholz. I'd like to make two comments about the objective design guidelines, and then my last four comments will be about the zoning code. The design guidelines, I think it's real important, and it was pointed out for me graphically when we built the building at 41 and Main, which has no elevator, that that's really how not to do a plant project. And so, staff has recommended not to change the ODS to make elevators necessary if it's three stories or higher, but it suggests that you put it in to an amendment to our California Building Code. And so, I just want to strongly encourage you to do that tonight, so it doesn't get lost. Just get it on the agenda, so that elevator piece can be there. The second thing about the ODS I want to talk about is about the parapets, and I made this plea before the Planning Commission, and I'm going to do it before you now. So, I live in a neighborhood of flat roofs, flat roofs. A parapet is a design. It serves no purpose other than looks or beauty, and it comes up against your flat roof, okay? On my flat roof, if I have to have a parapet, which I don't, but the new building might, I can't sweep off my flat roof and get rid of my leaves, my branches, whatever's fallen on my thing, nor would I be able to reach over and clean out my gutters, which I do still, okay? So, I find this parapet thing a non-functional, something that would get in the way of a property owner, or of someone who lives in a house where they can't take care of their roof. And so, I would hope that you would make a parapet optional, which means it's not in here, okay? Or it's somehow stated that way. So, that's that, about that. So, now, moving on to the zoning ordinance, I do want to say I agree with the Planning Commission bringing the heights down to 30 feet rather than 37, because as has been suggested to us, that, that if you're offering certain things under these new legislations, you can add another 10 feet. So, now, we're already up to 40 feet, which is above the 37 feet, which the city had said that they had recommended. So, I'm hoping you will honor that and go down to the 30 feet. I also agree about the fencing, that there maybe should be some height involved with that. My experience is, a lot of those fences got changed during the shutdown, and that some of those were done probably not legally. And so, I would think that your grandfathering should happen before, you know, like in 2020 or 2019, not that it start, you know, today, because several people have gotten away with things. I'm going to beg for an extra minute, only because we're doing two items at the same time, which is the ODS plus the zoning ordinance. And just let me quickly add on the thing about the school district I think is really important, because even though both the hotel and the school district were previously zoned the same in terms of they were acceptable in their zones, one's got changed and one hasn't. And so, I still am going to press for the point that I think it would be to the city's advantage to change that zoning to public facility. And in terms of anything else that's critical, oh, no, thank you.
Hello, everybody. Nicole Dorfman, Morro Bay. I just want to echo a couple of things that the previous speaker said. I think with the design standards, to have elevators for projects, multifamily projects that are two stories or more, is actually really important considering that we have many seniors in our community. Having to walk up and downstairs could be a real hardship, and actually could make it, them ineligible to have those units. Also, families with young children, very difficult to carry groceries and babies and strollers up and downstairs. And also, so that we can be inclusive for folks in our community who are potentially physically disabled. I think it is an extra burden on the developer, but it does make it so that anybody can live there. I don't think we should disqualify people because of their physical abilities in order to live in this new housing. I think it's actually very important. The next thing, I also very much appreciate the 30-foot heights, so thank you for that.
Anyone else for public comment on item B1? AGP?
Thank you, Mayor. We have no raised hands.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close the public hearing, close the public comment, and bring it back to council. Can we address a few of those questions, please? Did the Planning Commission talk about the parapet roofs?
So, they did talk about the parapet roofs, and that was really more of a design requirement. They recommended that that be included, because that is a typical feature that one sees in Morro Bay architecture, that it's typical. Again, also, ODS projects, you will only find them in commercial and multifamily zone, so it does allow for some screening there and provides some flexibility.
It's not residential.
Correct. Not single-family residential, sorry.
Not single-
Commercial or multifamily, yeah.
The elevators?
Yep. So, thank you for the question. So, elevators, I mean, it would have little-to-no effect in ODS, other than potentially running us afoul of state law in making projects more cumbersome and more expensive. I don't think we want to be in that area, but we can add elevator requirements to our local amendments to the city's building code. And that would apply to all multifamily projects and multi-story projects that we, like, say, up to three stories. So, I think if the council's desire is to go down that road, I would suggest that we make it a local amendment to the city's building code, kind of worked through it with our building folks, and there doesn't seem to be really any issue there. So, if there is a desire there, that could be something that you, maybe as a future agenda item, you know-
Or Planning Commission.
Yeah, yeah, you could bring it up as a future agenda item, provide direction to us to do that, and then we could start that process if you'd like.
So, Mr. Graham, would that be something else that, there was that comment about the non-conforming rezoning? I know people who didn't even know their properties were rezoned, so-
So, rezoning might be, you know, partial misnomer. We changed the names of the zones, but they're largely the same. They largely allow the same types of things, they largely allow the same densities. We just went from like the R1, you know, designation, R2 designation, and we got rid of those, it was kind of antiquated, and we went to like residential, single-family, multifamily, that type of thing, which is a more, you know, commonly used, updated, you know, term for our residential densities. And we paired them with our general plan land use designation, so they match exactly, which is why we have all the map amendments here, because some of them need to be caught up to the land use map amendment. up to the land use map designations. They don't match, and so we're trying to make them match because they're actually required to match by state law.
So then in simple terms, if someone's been rezoned and wants to add an ADU, they're going to be able to or not going to be able to?
In most circumstances...
You're telling me it's not changed, but now...
Yeah, I mean, I would have to be a specific scenario raised, but for multi... If you have residential housing, state law basically allows you to add ADUs to any unit. So the city wouldn't be able to prohibit that.
And the last question was on the fence height. Did you look at that with that grandfathering?
So the fence height, you know, item that we brought forward to you and recommend the changes to here this evening to grandfather them in is, we looked at, you know, we have the issue mostly in North Morro Bay where we had multiple complaints and then just neighbors complaining on neighbors. It was like kind of an awful situation, quite frankly. And we went around and looked at all the scenarios that were out there and the situations, and we said, you know, really what we have out here, these are not health, life, safety issues. And so if you want to grandfather them in, you can. It doesn't create any issues for us, and we would just start it. The clock would start from like when you adopt the new ordinance and it becomes effective. So if you're interested in doing that, we provided that opportunity for you. We did ask that you add an amendment to the stuff that's in front of you this evening to add it to that Section B because we didn't put it there. And that was a great thing that was brought forward, I think by Ms. Winholz, actually, pointed it out. So we do appreciate that because that would have been a little funky if we moved it forward without that.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to turn to council for comments or any other questions. To my right, Councilmember Landrum.
I am wondering about some... I wanted some clarification on the scope of work to be completed by the Downtown Design District regarding, you know, the setbacks, visual resource policy and all of those things. Are we... Is that going to be... Just assumed that we're going to take care of that, or...
I mean, I think that those are things that are on the table for the Downtown Design District to consider because you're going to be looking at all aspects of development in association with that downtown area. So that's all on the table. Now, I can't speak to what's going to come out of that process, right? That's not predetermined. We're in the middle of it right now, and you just basically had your second full meeting with the full sort of group. So I think we're going to come out of that process with some sort of recommendation and policy language that could be incorporated into the zoning code, but we're early on in the process. We don't have language yet.
Okay. I just think that's really important, and maybe we can somehow add that to like be a requirement tonight or something of that... I don't know. I think of the motion, like maybe can we require that the Downtown Design District comes up with a definition of live-work and non-hosted hotels and all of that sort of thing?
Oh, I mean, those types of things...
Just to make sure that that does happen and we don't just forget or not...
If that's a desire, I'd be happy to speak to both of those items. The non-hosted hotel, I don't think we need a definition for it. We don't... Like, we have a definition of hotel. It's just a hotel. It's fine. It doesn't need anything special associated with it. Like, our definition of hotel doesn't tell you how the hotel functions. That's dealt with through, you know, conditioning on a project, assuming that it's operating consistently with the zone that it's located in, that type of thing. So I don't really know that we need to have... We did some research in that and looked at what communities might have, and they called it different things, but largely they just mirrored their hotel definitions. It didn't really make anything specific.
Do they have to do ADA compliance and things like that? Like a hotel would?
Mm-hmm, correct.
The non-hosted hotels do?
It is a hotel, yes.
Okay.
It has to meet all...
And then so what's the difference between a short-term rental in a commercial area and a non-hosted hotel?
Short-term rentals are defined as a residential use, and your hotels are defined as a commercial use.
So, and there's like one's 100% and one's like not 100%, or...
It's just how they're defined differently in the code, that's all. One of them is defined as residential and one's defined as commercial.
Okay, but and then the live-work?
We... Live-work is basically mixed use. Our zoning code addresses mixed use. I mean, if it's the council's desire, we can come up with definitions for them. I mean, we've had one project in the eight years that I've been here that has called itself a live-work project and...
Well, I mean, if that's... It's in here, and it's saying that we're going to do that in the Downtown Design District, I would just like to make sure that we do define these things and define the setback issue and all of that. I would just...
I think that, I mean, one of the members...
Well, I know, but I would like to make sure that we have to do that, you know?
That's up to council. I...
That's my comment.
Yeah, okay.
On that one. And then, oh, are we... Can we do the other one too, the second one? The public facility as... Because of what's, you know, the possibility that we might purchase the school or have some, I don't know, if we ever did, if we, you know, there's always been that kind of murmur of moving the city buildings to the elementary school. Wouldn't it be like, I don't know, is that advantageous for us to have it be... What is it, public facility zoning, or...
Right. So one thing I just wanted to clarify is that if the council wanted to change that to public facility zoning, the process would be to start with a land use map amendment. We would not be able to make that change tonight.
Okay.
Because the land use for the elementary school is already public facility land use, and so we are limited to, by state law, the zoning has to match the land use. And so if we decided that the... We should not have made it high-density residential in 2021, then staff would need direction to come back with a general plan land use map amendment and zoning map amendment for that property. We'd have to change both because they have to mirror one another.
Okay, so that's another future agenda item kind of thing?
It could be. I would also, I mean, because we don't know what it's going to be, I would not recommend that we change it right now to public facilities because it's not really a public facility. Yes, it's owned by a public entity, a school district, but it's not really serving that function. Like, they've had multiple uses out there. They've had, you know, gyms out there. They have multiple classes that are taught out there, like yoga classes and things like that, I believe. There was a church out there for a while. It's not there now. They just recently left. But, and then there's the Montessori school, right, that's out there.
Sorry, and I just had one other comment on that. So for context, a lot of the discussion that the Planning Commission had between 2017 to 2021, when we were going through the Plan Morro Bay, the land use update, there really was a lot of discussion about whether it would be appropriate to change the land use and zoning. And the important point is that the city has very few high-density residential zoned properties in town, and it was really an ability for the city to meet its housing element goals. That's a very large property, and it's a property that is in the greater downtown area that could potentially provide future opportunities for the city to meet its multifamily housing needs. And so that was something that both the General Plan Advisory Committee and Planning Commission really kind of considered on what they wanted to do with that. Because at the time, we were also talking about all of the public facilities in town. They should have their own land use and zoning. So just wanted to offer that for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. And I really appreciate, you know, the explanation about the elevator and all of that, and I will make that a future agenda item because I think it's really important, but I really appreciate your taking the time and explaining that. I do, you know, I found out, one thing that does kind of bother me is the artificial turf. And in California, that's been, you know, municipalities can ban them, and because they're so unsafe, sport teams have banned them, and, you know, I think maybe we should consider not allowing that part.
Thank you, Councilmember Burton. Perfect. Councilmember Edwards.
Just for clarification, so if I'm hearing this correctly, with regard to the changing of the land use on the elementary school from what it is now to public facility, that would require it to be agendized and have that amendment done, right? If this all passes tonight, as is, is that a very complicated thing to do in terms of... Or is that something where, I mean, pretty much across the board, it's just a matter of changing the land use on that as well as changing it on the zoning?
It's very process-heavy, so it would involve Planning Commission approval. As a land use map amendment, it would require approval by council resolution, and then it would also require an amendment to the city's zoning map. Because the zoning map is part of the city's coastal implementation plan, it would also require certification by the Coastal Commission. And so that's why we tried to go through with a fine-tooth comb citywide, all parcels, to make sure, like, we had all these... Because we wanted to get this all in one application to coastal. But certainly, I mean, the city's done LCP amendments over the years, and that's part of the process. It's just, it's not something that can be done in one hearing, that's all.
I'll hold out here.
So I have a question related to that, just hypothetical. Then it's not changed as of right now because they haven't adopted this yet, correct?
So the zoning designations have not been changed, that's correct, because it's held up by Coastal. But the land use plan, the land use map, has been certified by Coastal. That was certified in 2021. So we're in this situation where our zoning map doesn't match our land use map, and if there were ever a project that would come forward on a property where there was an inconsistency, the land use plan would prevail and that basically trumps the zoning. So that is kind of the superior document. State law requires that the two documents match.
Okay.
And so it's really why staff's presented it as a cleanup amendment.
So you almost have to just do it, and then if you're going to make a change... I mean, this changed from what it originally was because we know there was a desire to build housing there. And now that we know that, you know, there's potential opportunity, is it housing or something else? So, yeah.
Right, right.
So it's kind of like the Vistra site that we changed, and now they want to change back.
Exactly.
But way ahead of the horse.
Madam Mayor, maybe to clarify, so what staff's doing with these cleanup amendments is basically confirming that all the documents in the city are consistent with the controlling document.
Got it, thank you.
So we're not making any changes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
I don't have any questions at this time. I do... You did mention comments. So I would like to say that, you know, I was a part of the previous council that was in favor of the height increase, and I just want to say that due to, you know, new laws as well as listening to our community over time, as well as listening to our Planning Commission over several meetings, and understanding what, you know, seven feet means, I essentially, I just want to say that, you know, I will be supporting the recommendations tonight. So that was pretty big for me because I was a pretty big fighter for that 37... I'm just going to say, I was a pretty huge supporter of that 37 feet. So, but I think that at this point, you know, it's not a hill I'm going to die on here. So I think that in order to have consensus and, you know, listening to our community's desires, I'm happy with what we've been presented.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. So I'll sweep through one more time real quick to see if there's anything else before we move to a motion. I would ask one thing. I'd like to ask about a consideration for grandfathering on those fence heights, that we could set a stipulation at eight feet on that so that if somebody's done something without a permit... I mean, you wouldn't have been allowed to put a 10-foot fence up, correct? I mean, so I wouldn't want to just leave it blank without putting some number there just in case we didn't see somebody do something. Is that a problem to do that, or...
We could change the... And I could have... We could maybe have Dana bring that... We could bring that slide up, maybe? Can you do it? Okay.
Can you just plop it in there with that?
Yeah, that's what I want to do, but I want us to know, to tell you exactly what we're going to do because it has to be specific if we're going to make the change on the floor.
Right.
So it would be fence heights in existence as of the date of this... As of the date of adoption of Ordinance 662, shall be considered legal, nonconforming, and allowed to remain?
You could just add after Ordinance 662, fence heights in existence as the date of adoption of Ordinance 662, comma, no greater than X, comma, shall be considered legal, nonconforming, and allowed to remain. The question to council would be, do you want to make it six feet, eight feet, 10 feet? You know, just, you know, I'm not sure Scott would be the expert on what's reasonable, but that would prevent there being some rogue 15-foot fence out there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with... I was just trying to provide you the evidence. That was... Thank you, Mr. Nymeyer.
Thank you. So is eight feet a good standard, or should it be less?
We don't have any standard where you're allowed to have eight feet. I mean, the maximum would be six.
So then six should be it?
Six and a half, I guess, right, at six and a half, Cindy?
Is it also shrubbery too?
Yeah, yes. Yes, fences, walls, and hedges.
So just if I wanted to go out, if I could afford the wood and I wanted to go buy a, like, build a 15-foot fence, would I have time to do it? Like, and it would still be grandfathered in?
No. It's not going to be grandfathered in.
Just after tonight, it would be over.
We're not doing 15 feet.
Well, no, okay, so eight feet.
I mean, technically, yes, yes.
Okay.
I mean, yes.
So the standard is six and a half feet, is that what...
So six and a half feet is what the max is on backyard or interior side?
Thank you.
Yeah, and it's just what the council's comfort level is.
Thank you. Looking for a motion? Someone who dares to make that? Oh, please, sorry.
I also want to comment with regard to the height and the decrease from the 37 feet to the 30. The work that I'm... The Councilmember Landrum and I are doing with the Downtown Design District Committee has been very eye-opening, and we're getting, you know, as we get down to the details of that, and I think that it's really important for the work that we're doing there to... Yeah, I will also be supporting that tonight.
Thank you. And if there's no further comments, I'd be looking for a motion, and we would need to add those two language in there. Perhaps staff can help us when we get to that point. I know we don't need to read the whole thing, correct, Mr. Nymeyer?
No.
Thank you.
Do you mean read the whole title of the ordinance, or do you mean...
Yes, I mean, read the whole title.
Oh, yes, for adoption of an ordinance, you have to read the whole title?
The whole thing?
Just the name of it up on the...
Okay, 7323, Ordinance 662.
So on the recommendation we have in quotation marks, yeah.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mayor Protem. I talk a lot already.
Okay. All right.
Here to work with you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so I move that we... Let's see here, go with staff recommendation. Let's see here. To approve... So I would just approve Ordinance Number 662? Or do you want me to read this whole...
Yeah, unfortunately, if we're not going to read the whole ordinance, you have to say you're going to adopt it by title and then read the title. And so if you could just read, "Under Recommendation 1, Introduce for First Reading by Number and Title Only," et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, I'll read the whole thing.
Thank you.
Okay, so I move that we approve. Let's see here. Okay, so introduce the first reading by number and title only with further reading waived, Ordinance Number 662, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay, California, amending the 2022 Zoning Code Coastal Implementation Plan Title 17 zoning and the zoning map, which includes miscellaneous amendments to all of Division 1 and Division 2 and Chapters 17.23, 17.26, 17.27, 17.29, 17.30, 17.36, 17.38, 17.39, 17.42, 17.43, 17.44, 17.53, and 17.54 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code and Adopt Resolution Number 73-23, approving a general plan, local coastal program, LCP, land use map amendment with a finding that no further environmental review is required pursuant to state SEQA guidelines, Section 15162. Okay, do I need to add anything to that one?
If the council wants to amend the fence height, then now we'd add that in.
Okay, so can we... Can I just say add in what Chris said earlier?
I'm flattered, but...
Okay, yes, okay. So I... So I would like to add the amendment to add to Section 17.23.060, fences and freestanding walls, to item A1A and B, that fence heights in existence as of the date of adoption of ordinance 662 shall be considered legal nonconforming and allowed to remain to the maximum height of 6.6 and a half feet. Wow, okay, thank you. Okay, did I get all of that good? Okay, so we're gonna move on to number two?
If council's gonna vote for number one first, or if you wanna bundle them together, I'm not sure if you wanna do separate votes.
Bundle them. Bundle them. Go ahead, Protem.
Okay, this is punishment. Okay, all right, number two. I recommend that we introduce for first reading by number and title only with further reading waived ordinance number 661, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay, California, for adoption of objective design standards for inclusion as Chapter 17.31 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code, residential and mixed-use objective design standards, and further to be an amendment to the 2022 zoning code with a finding that no further environmental review is required pursuant to state SEQA guidelines, Section 15162.
And do I have a second?
I second.
Can I offer a friendly amendment on that one? That we, on the second one, that we do not permit the option of artificial turf, because of the PFAS exposure to our community and our animals. I love everyone staring at me. It's just, I mean, this is just in the, in that one instance for the objective design guidelines.
I understand where you're coming from, I just, I feel like we didn't have enough time to prepare for that. I, I get you, because PFAS is very concerning. Yeah, at this time, I will not accept your friendly amendment, however, I think that this could be, okay, hold for a second. Can I ask staff a question?
Sure.
Okay. So if we were to include this in the future, how difficult will that make your lives?
It's the, this is, it's amendment to the zoning code, so if you want us to, if you wanna add, it depends on how you wanna do this, but if you wanted to add it, again, as a future agenda item, to have us look at it, because we have like turf requirements and allowances in the zoning code, just in general, this is related to ODS, which we probably won't have very many projects related to. So the impact is sort of minimal here, but if it is a larger concern, we could bring it back as a discussion item for council, and then if there was direction beyond that, then we could move to make amendments to the city's zoning code to remove the allowance for turf until they come up with something better.
So then it would automatically be out of that one, too? Out of the objective design guidelines?
Yeah, so that's what I was saying, I think if, if, if there's a concern, because you don't have enough information right now, I understand that, and if you wanted to add it as a future agenda item, we could bring it back with some more information. And if it was the council's desire after that to direct us to make changes to the city zoning code, then we would do it globally to the zoning code, because turf's also allowed from a landscaping standpoint as well, the landscaping ordinance portion of the city zoning code. There's certainly a lot more opportunity for folks to put turf in as it relates to that.
Right.
So, versus this, which is probably not gonna get used very much, versus ODS, I'm sorry. So I, I don't know, that's.
Yeah, it just seemed, it just seemed like an easier way to, like, make a statement than.
Yeah, I don't know, it's entirely up to council on what you wanna do.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Landrum, and I agree that we, we need to look at that. And so I would like to be more educated, though, on the options for turf before I make that blanket decision. And so at this time, I'm going to deny your friendly motion on this item, and we, I think we can ask later for a future agenda item for this to come back, because I agree with you, it is a concern. So at this time, I'm gonna stick with my motion.
I, I think this may be something that we can, and staff is hearing these comments, direct to Planning Commission also, along with the elevator, so we can let them take a swing at it first. With that, I'll ask the city clerk for a roll call vote, please.
Do we have a second?
Yes, we do.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Apologize.
That's how we got to the conversation.
Council, Councilmember Barton?
How do you, how do we vote on this? Do we vote on one and then two, or we're?
The motion included both ordinances.
It's all together, okay.
It was all together.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wixom?
Yes.
Motion carries by vote.
Thank you, thank you again, Cindy, for your work on that, and to the Planning Commission. And with that, before we move to item C1, I think we'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you. I can't believe that's what time it is. Ready, Greg? Yeah. Thank you, everyone. We're moving on to item C1, and I will turn it over to the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, members of the City Council. I'm going to do my best to keep this presentation short, but we're all available for questions, so I wanna acknowledge that we have some folks in the room who are available for questioning should they come up. Project Manager John Rogers from GHD, we have City Engineer Eric Rideo, we have Transportation Planner John DiNunzio from Slocog, and we have Paul Valadeo from Caltrans are all here. So I'm gonna keep the presentation high level, if the council wishes to have details, we can certainly call up any of those folks to, to talk about the project. So this, this relates to the Roundabout Project, we're now calling it the Roundabout Project because that was the vote at the meeting, I believe in June, from the City Council. And at that meeting, City Council directed staff to move forward with design of the project. And we did acknowledge in that meeting that the environmental phase had not yet been completed, but we, we thought at that time that we can go ahead and move forward with design while environmental was, was almost completed. Well, we've learned some things since then, and the main one is that in talking with Caltrans staff, Caltrans is interested in taking over the project under their SHOP program, which we discussed at, at that June council meeting, that's a grant program that, that Caltrans has. And it's a unique opportunity for the city, because it means that Caltrans would handle design of the Roundabout and construction of the Roundabout. And in discussions with Slocog, it turns out the city can actually be returned some monies that the city has pledged. And so this is an interesting opportunity, because it would free up a lot of staff time, we wouldn't be doing all the design and construction management. But we still would have a seat at the table with Caltrans specifically on the issue of pedestrian improvements, so in how they implemented that solution. And the one requirement of Caltrans to, to take over this project is that the city complete the environmental document, and that the, that the City Council then approves that document, and then Caltrans could take over the project shortly thereafter. So we are coming back to the City Council with a bit of a change. We're not recommending to move forward with design at this time, we're recommending to focus our efforts on the environmental document and to complete the environmental phase. And to do that, we need a contract amendment with GHD, it's Amendment Number Four, I believe it's to the tune of $396,000, to complete, and in some cases redo, and in some cases update, all the environmental work. And the reason why all these updates are needed, and rewrites are needed, is because quite a bit of time has passed since some of the environmental, the environmental studies were done, and some Caltrans standards have changed, so some, some of the work just flat out needs to be redone, which is unfortunate. I do just wanna let the council know that the city is not proposing to use any discretionary funds of this, of, you know, from the city to pay for that environmental work. The environmental work would be paid through the development impact fee funding that can only be used for this project, so, or capacity upgrades at this intersection in some cases, which, which this would qualify for. So, you know, should the city, for example, not wanna use those funds, we can't use it for paving, or, you know, anything else, really. And the city would ultimately have to give back the money to the developers that paid into the, into the fee. So with that said, the, the subject of, of this meeting tonight is really the, the contract amendment, this idea of transferring the project to Caltrans, I did wanna, you know, daylight that today and make that public, but that doesn't have to be a decision that's made tonight. Again, Caltrans won't even consider taking the project until the environmental document is done, which we expect to take a little bit over a year. So that question will be for the council over a year from now. The question tonight is really whether to move forward with the contract amendment so that we can complete environmental phase for this project. So that concludes my presentation, and again, if, if any of the council members wish to go into any details about what any of that means, we're all here to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Qualick. I will start with council questions to my left, Councilmember Ford, any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes, I believe that we have Mr. DiNunzio and, from Caltrans, Mr.?
Valadeo.
I can't see them, sorry. So these might be questions for one or two, or you. Could we, Mr. Valadeo from Caltrans, could you explain to us a little bit about how this project would be rolled into the SHOP maintenance program that Caltrans has?
Yeah, so the State Highway Operations Protection or Prevention Program, the SHOPP, is our, our main state funding source for projects that we implement. And it's a, it's a budget we maintain as an agency. We have a, a capital maintenance project that includes improving, you know, the state highway system throughout the city limits of Morro Bay. And of course, right in the middle of that length of project is Route 141 and Main Street, and as we've talked about earlier in previous agenda meetings. So as the two projects progress in parallel, with, with completion of the environmental document for the Roundabout, it would be at that point that the Roundabout project would be brought in under Caltrans implementing agency role. And the seat at the table by all project partners, Slocog, the city, the city's residents, and the like, does not change. It's just that we then administer the project in lieu of the city after environmental determination.
And what about design? Since the city would not be moving forward with the design phase if we, if we were to do this, how does that work with you in terms of the design?
We would be, it would be our staff performing design, or if we choose, our consultants performing design under the SHOP program, but we would involve the city for their review of the project's design, we would involve Slocog, we would involve the general public. It would make only sense to use this venue, City Council, to, to showcase any updates in our design through the City Council, you know, meetings and the like. We can also use the option of a general public meeting in the area, but City Council makes the most sense.
Okay, and then another question I had was, I, I think it is important for the city to have a seat at the table, and it was mentioned in the staff report with regard to pedestrian modification specifically, but I'm feeling like, you know, this is the gateway to our community. We are now in the process of working with a Downtown Design District Group that is heavily into, you know, exploring how we maintain our character and our feeling of, and our vibe here. And I just feel that that is important if we're talking about this project in particular, and so how could, how could we maintain some of that control, if possible?
If, if I could just jump in there, and again, this is speculative at this point.
Sure.
Because, but part of a potential deal would be that the city keeps money in the project. And so that, that money keeps us at the table, not only for pedestrian improvements, I mentioned that in the staff report, because that was a heavy emphasis on all the public outreach we did. But when I was discussing at a staff level with Caltrans about what we would be looking at, you know, the, the other piece is welcome signage, you know, how, how, what do we put in the middle of the Roundabout, is it landscaping? Caltrans, for example, typically would pave or just do a concrete kind of interior of that, where, you know, that likely wouldn't be acceptable for Morro Bay. And so we would work with Caltrans on, on those sorts of things.
Sorry, yeah, I'm done for now, sorry about that.
Councilmember Barton?
I am pleased to see that, that this is a possibility and that, that can keep us moving forward on the, the Roundabout. So, so thank you for being willing to talk with them about this, and so, I'd like to see it happen.
Councilmember Landrum?
Well, I was surprised that, because when we had this earlier meeting, I asked why, I think I asked why Caltrans wouldn't pay for this all to begin with, and it seems like they've changed their minds. But in this, in this potential scenario, where it sounds like Caltrans is paying for everything, how does exposure to liability in the case of any accidents work in Morro? Like, if the accident happens in Morro Bay, with the, the project that they've designed, how, how's, what's, how does that affect our liability?
So I'll speak at a high level of that. So when, when projects are designed to engineering standards and, you know, accepted, accepted practices and approaches, for example, at an intersection, the, the city doesn't have liability in the case, I believe what you're asking about is like in a case of an accident or something like that.
Well, a pedestrian, say, you know, because there's so much speculation of the heavy, heavy pedestrian traffic there, and cyclists, and how unsafe it will be for a Roundabout there, if there is a, God forbid, injury or death, who is liable for that?
The driver.
Echoing what Mr. Director Qualick was saying, the, there's a government claim immunity, a design code immunity, so if public works are designed according to California state standards, then it's presumed that they're safe, and if there's an accident, then it's gonna be the, the party that actually was driving the vehicle that caused the accident that would have liability. So assuming that this project is built, if it's built according to California state standards, then there would be design immunity for the public entities involved.
Okay, so it wouldn't have, because Morro Bay wouldn't be in charge of designing it.
Morro Bay would not be liable, yeah.
Okay.
Neither, neither would Caltrans, assuming that the design was done according to state standards.
Okay, thank you. I just, I had an interesting revelation, just coincidentally, I, I had never met either Pwab member that were sitting on either side of me at the earlier meeting today, and it turns out, both of them, well, one of them works at Caltrans, and the other one is, his son is an executive there. And, and then I thought, well, I wonder how many other board members are Caltrans affiliated? And I just thought that was, it, it almost seemed like conflict of interest, but, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure. Then I had some questions, I think, for Mr. Rogers.
Hi.
Hi, welcome to the neighborhood.
Oh, that's funny, I didn't get it. Are you gonna change your shoes?
I almost wore the cardigan.
Okay, so on page 101 of your, in your letter, your email, it says...
Okay, so on page 101 of your, in your letter, your email, it says 105% complete? How is something 105% complete?
We did more than our scope listed.
Oh, okay. It was just jumped out at me. Okay, and on page, who's responsible for potential extra fees due to potential environmental issues on page 102?
I'll have to look. I don't see that exact point where I mean.
Let's see.
I did bring the laptop because I thought there'd be specific questions.
Okay. Oh, gosh, I have so many things highlighted here.
So I'm on page 102. I don't have the items numbered.
Right. Okay, I'm going to jump, I'm going to, I have that down as a question, but, oh, here, is that it? Caltrans recently, it's so hard to see because the font is so small. Okay, I'm going to jump, skip that one.
Okay.
All right. And has the wall type changed? It said something about the anticipated wall type. Has that changed from the earlier ICE studies or?
Yeah, that is correct. The recent, so when you guys approved us to go forward with design, I had a collaboration meeting with a geotech engineer and the structural engineer, and they hadn't looked into a lot of the details, but they had assumed a standard wall would work there. But that would require half the highway to be closed during construction, which they've recently realized Caltrans would not approve. So they would have to do a top-down wall construction. So it'd be a soil nail or a soldier pile wall. So that's different than was in the original studies.
Is that made out of what, like?
It's just built a little differently. A standard wall, you would, you'd pull out all the earth behind the wall, which requires, if you don't have a slope to it, all the earth falls over.
Right.
So that's why you would close half the highway to build a standard wall there. But to construct a wall there without closing the highway, you have to actually do a top-down wall. So you might put in, you might drill piles into the ground and put wood planks in and then cover it with stucco so that you could do it without actually doing a back cut behind the wall. It's hard to describe that.
So is it, is it changing the height of the wall or anything like that?
No, it's just preventing the highway from being closed during construction.
Okay, and let's see. Okay, and on page 105, earlier, it stated that one of the benefits to having Caltrans handle this project is to eliminate city staff time. But then it sounds like there's still a lot of city staff time that's involved. So I just was wondering what it?
So that wouldn't be in our, that would be in your staff report, correct? I don't think I mentioned staff time in my.
Question, which, which staff time are you referring to?
Well, I guess, well, here it's saying, on page 105, it's saying that there's city staff time required. And then early, what you said was there's less staff time. That's, that's the advantage to this. And so it seemed to, one seemed to contradict the other.
Yeah, so it's a good question. I believe on page 105, city staff time is referring to staff time in the environmental phase. So the elimination of staff time, it would be in the design phase and the construction phases because we wouldn't be managing the project at that point.
Okay. And who's the city, the Morro Bay project manager?
Mr. Rogers.
Oh, okay. And is this project being treated as a state highway systems project?
It, I think technically it's an encroachment permit. It's not enough on the highway, but Paul could describe that. Is it a state highway project?
Yes, because?
That ramp?
It's on one, it's on 41.
Yeah.
And the third is Main Street. So it is on the state highway system, but it's a hybrid thereof, state highway system project, but also an encroachment and the like.
Because if it's, if it's a state highway system project, it seems like Morro Bay shouldn't have to pay for any of it. Like, why would we pay for a state highway project? Anything?
In 1998, Senate Bill 45 was passed. And so projects that are outside of maintenance and safety, safety-driven projects where there's a known collision rate, projects of that kind, on the state highway system or not, are implemented by local agencies in partnership with SLOCOG. So that was a law that was passed in 1998, Senate Bill 45. The purview of Caltrans on the state highway system, 141 and Main, is maintenance and safety when there is an existing collision rate that's higher than the state average. So that's, that's the long and short of it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers? So when you do the, so I don't know how to do this, like, how can we ask that when you do the traffic counts, that you do, that you include pedestrian and bicycle traffic?
I believe that's completed. We did do that. That's part of the 105% completed. We exceeded our scope because we were proceeding with the project until we halted for a community outreach.
Oh, okay. But some of them said that you had to do more, that you had to update them.
What, we've, we've completed the report, but it has not.
You've done all the updates?
But it has not been approved by Caltrans.
Oh, okay.
So there could be comments that we have to address.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I, one.
To add to that, I would say that we had to update it due to, there was recent projects that the city completed with a hotel and affordable housing, and there was a requirement to update the traffic counts and the analysis to consider that additional traffic.
Oh, I think that's what I was talking about. So then you have to, you have to update it?
It's been completed.
Oh, you've already done it?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, okay, I was just at the Traffic Safety Workshop, and there was an EMS paramedic there from San Luis that was retired, and he, what did he recommend? That when you check the, he said that a lot of times when people are in, go to the hospital, they're not injured at all and they just go home. And the real way to get the data is to check with, do you remember what that was?
I don't recall the exact language, but it, there's some sort of emerging national standard.
Yeah, that they have the, they had the real, I just thought maybe you should know that. And then I find it really ironic that we're considering greenhouse gases. This is a consideration here when we have a very active drive-through restaurant right there, which I drive by all the time, and there's a huge line of people stalling, you know, waiting in line for their, their food. Let's see. Oh, page 107, I just wanted to point out that because there are lots of people who live right by this intersection, that the part about the noise, the vibration, the increased construction and traffic, I just, I want to make sure that we have some of them that are in the audience, and I just want to make sure that they're all aware of that, that that's going to be a consideration. Is this, is it correct that this still has to go through Coastal Commission? Did I read that right?
I believe that is required.
Okay.
We might be able to defer that if we'd like, but sooner or later, you do need to get Coastal Commission approval. Yeah.
Okay. And what are the impacts on businesses like miners when, with the traffic that will be, you know, closed? And how will they, miners gets a lot of deliveries, you know, on the regular, and how will that, has that been factored in?
That will be decided and worked through during design.
Okay, so that's a Caltrans thing?
If they take the project over.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the right-of-way acquisitions, is that the same, same thing?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what's the difference between CE and EA under NEPA?
CE is a much lower impact. EA is environmental assessment. It's when you have a, some sort of environmental impact. CE typically gets applied when you have an overlay project or something like this. This project has potential impacts to cultural resources.
Okay.
And the CE for NEPA that accounts for, it's called categorical exclusion under NEPA.
Okay, and you're hoping to get that one?
Always hoping.
Okay, but you don't know that you, if you will or not?
Yeah.
And if, if you get one, or okay, if a complex ISEA or EIREIS is needed, does that result in a higher cost to the city?
Yes. And Caltrans would decide that. Right now, they've given us feedback and bought into the current assumption in our scope.
And like, what percentage more would that represent to the city if?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
There's no known, we don't know? It's just a big question mark?
I haven't asked for a scope for that.
Okay. But that would be something where you'd be coming back to us for a change order?
Correct. We've asked for their feedback based on all the tech studies, and they've been heavily involved in the project, and we're very confident in the current assumptions in the scope.
Okay. Oh, is, did you already do the engineering design? Or you, you still have to do that?
We did do a layout, which is what we presented to the public community. The requirements have changed since 2016, so that's why we're relooking at that. And also, we got a lot of public feedback that we want to incorporate into the project.
So you're going to redo that? You're going to update it?
We're going to optimize the design.
So can you, when you do that, can you include a no-build design with, but with safety enhancements as well?
Then, potentially. I'm not sure how, I don't think we're looking into that level of detail.
Well, you're doing the, you're doing the traffic light and that.
We're looking at just for a footprint of potential environmental impacts. So I don't think a lot of those safety improvements would increase our impact zone.
Okay.
So I'll just add that the city hasn't asked GHD to scope any scenarios of a traffic light or a no-build because that was decided upon by the City Council in June.
Okay. And this, this has been a really contentious, obviously, issue here in Morro Bay. It looks like there's like another opportunity for the public to voice their, okay, so that's still out there.
Correct. Part of the environmental process is a public hearing, so they will be able to review all the updated studies once they're approved by Caltrans and make comments.
Okay. And just, I, so, all right. I guess, and this is not going to an RFP, this is just continuous, continuing?
That's correct. It's a contract amendment, so this isn't really a procurement. GHD has already been working on these things. They already have their subconsultants. So yes, we're just requesting a contract amendment.
Okay. I notice in here that Mr. Rogers is the largest earner in this whole project.
Any other questions? With that, I will go to public comment. Thank you, Mr. Rogers, on item C1. No public comment?
No. Sorry, Madam Mayor, I was just slightly dazed there at the neighborhood project. I think this is an amazing evolution of this project. When I followed it for quite some time, and like counselor, Commissioner, Councilperson Landrum, I always wondered why Caltrans didn't jump in with both feet earlier on, and it's very exciting to see them willing to come in now. Because the city chose the roundabout, Caltrans is putting in much more money than they would have in anything else. And the fact that they're willing to take on the risk, the liability and the engineering load of actually designing and manufacturing this, albeit all in there right of way, I think is a wonderful gift to the city. So I would encourage you to support staff's recommendation that we move forward, get them the environmental document they need so that we actually know what the project is going to do. So we can see if we can get past that part of it, see what additional challenges might come through the environmental process, and then turn it over to Caltrans. It's wonderful that they're willing to take it on. It would be very challenging for this community to have to mobilize the consultants and the in-house people to do a Caltrans-type project. This is their kind of work. Let them do it. Thank you.
Betty, Betty Winholz. I would like to ask my question out loud that I asked in my email, and that is, this is going to cost just under $400,000. And so how much money is currently in the Development Impact Fees Fund? How much is already committed to something else or been spent? So how much is there in there right now? So that's, that's my big question. I made my comments regarding, as you see, the benefits for going to Caltrans versus not, but since that's not part of the question tonight, the question is whether or not to go ahead with only the EIR and not with the design. And I always thought that the EIR or whatever environmental study is happening should come before the design. It only makes sense to see if the piece of property that you're looking at is suitable. But it's good to know that we're only looking at the environment for a roundabout and not for a non-project, which, that's too bad because there's a good comparison there to the non-project's benefit. Which leads me to my last point, which is, it's interesting and maybe fortuitous for the public, but maybe not for people running for office, that in a year, we will have a chance to decide whether to turn the project over to Caltrans, whether they can go run with it, or whether we think we need to slow our heels. And that will be campaign season. So for those of you who are running for office next year, I think you can count on this being on a campaign issue.
Natalia Merzouin. And I hesitate to talk about this because it's gone on for quite a while, and you guys have had a long day. I really appreciate all your hard work, and I, as I said, I hesitate to add to it, but in observing all these months of wrangling on this issue, I've never heard once anybody bring up a different design possibility. Never once did anybody say, "Let's change the sign at Vineyard Drive that says Cambria and have it say Cambria and Morro Bay." And divert traffic in different ways so it's not all converging at one horrible, fairly ugly point that, in my opinion, will never have the capability of being as attractive as Morro Bay deserves to have as a primary entry to the town. Never once have I heard anybody suggest an alternative. And there are alternatives. You know, there could be a sign on Los Osos Valley Road on Highway 101 in San Luis that says Morro Bay, you know? And just come at the town from different, more attractive directions. And I would give a lot more credence and appreciation to your creativity and desire to come up with the best option for the town if I'd seen any of that. But anyway, I just wanted to bring it up.
Anyone else for public comment on this item?
I'm the one who is.
I'm the one who is closest to this intersection. My big concern always has been for the pedestrians, and I hope in this environmental impact, there is something that slows down the traffic before they get to these intersections. I believe there was talk about traffic calming and all of those type of implements, and I really do hope that all of that is studied very, very strongly before anything else is done. And I couldn't get much closer to the intersection. I am basically 90 feet away from the whole kitten caboodle. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on item C2? A G P?
Thank you, Mayor. We have no raised hands.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Are there any further questions, or we can go into comments? Questions? Nope? Questions? Comments?
I'll comment. Okay. I'm going to start with a comment. I don't have any questions. My comment is, I, you know, reading this and realizing the enormous, the amazing possibility of having to put out less funding and to turn over the bulk of the work to Caltrans, I am incredibly grateful for that possibility, and I just want to say thank you to all who have worked on this and have, you know, put a lot of thought and effort into it and taken into consideration the concerns of our community and trying to find a solution that, that kind of works for everyone. So I do appreciate this. And I want to see this move along, and I am happy to move forward with the recommendation at this time, and I agree with Betty, that it's great that we have the environmental aspect of it done first. So I am excited to move forward with this, and that's my comments for this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification on the timeframe from the point of the environmental work to, you mentioned a year, Mr. Qualick, is that correct? Is that what we have?
It's approximately a year. I think it's a bit more than that, maybe 14 months.
So by the time we get started until, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. And then, I also did want to understand a little bit more about the funding. We had capped it at 2.5 million. What exactly happens with the funding in terms of if Caltrans did come in and do this with SlowCog?
It's a good question, Councilmember Edwards, and, you know, part of this is, those are the sort of negotiations that would take place if the city council, if the future city council wishes to move forward with that, to transfer that project. Prelimarily, I can say that, you know, we could, we, I think the city can get back in the range of, you know, $500,000 to $1.5 million back from what we've pledged. So in 2021, we pledged 2.5 million. And, yeah, so we'd have, another way of saying it is, we'd have to keep a million to 2 million in the project.
So that would be our committed amount at that point?
Yeah, and again, that would have to be negotiated.
Okay. Just wanted to double-check.
Can I piggyback on that question? Is that okay, Mayor? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. So Director Qualick, can you then clarify how, or further expand on that, on how the money commitment, I know it's been mentioned earlier tonight, but that, that we would have more stake in that process because we would be contributing funds. If we were to pull out and not have to contribute anything, would that then, you know, that would eliminate our ability to participate in more of the process? Or does having those funds up to, you know, if we're, okay, if we are contributing funds, that keeps us in the, in the process of helping guide design as well as pedestrian safety to a certain aspect?
Good question, and again, some of this would be negotiated, but my understanding is that our money still in the project, should the city council wish to transfer the project to Caltrans, would be the justification for giving us a seat at the table. So typically, no offense to Caltrans, but Caltrans just basically does what they need to do. And if we are participants in the project from a funding standpoint, then obviously we'd have a seat at the table. It's not totally clear to me at this time whether there would still even be a project if the city refused to participate financially. And so, you know, that's not, those aren't conversations that I've had or routes that I've gone down. So I hope that answers your question.
It does, and I know that it's all speculation at this point, but just looking forward and just kind of, you know, talking about the funding and how much we're looking at putting into this, just keeping in mind that that's, that's important, that we have a stake in the game. So, anyway, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can I get clarification on a question that was asked about the $400,000 amendment? Is that, is there full funding still available through those impact fees, or is part of that coming from the Q and E money?
We could pay for all of it through the impact fees and the project-specific fees.
Thank you.
Yep. We can pay for the amendment through project-specific fees and development-impact fees.
Thank you. Councilmember Burton, comments?
Yes, I'd like to move along on the recommendation as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum, comments?
I just would want a clarification on who are the stakeholders?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. Is there, is that written somewhere?
Yeah, like page 105.
I'll take a look. Just give me one minute, please. So, and this maybe is a question for, that GHD can assist with. This isn't task 1A, specifically 1A.1, Project Management Coordination. There's a bullet that says that GHD will serve as a liaison with stakeholders and interested persons. I would assume that that's anyone who has an interest in the project.
Yeah, that's part of the environmental process, is to make sure we reach out to stakeholders. The main one on this project, I would say, is the high school, which we've done some significant outreach already. We'll probably do another check-in with them, depending on what the city decides. Maybe there's an outreach meeting where we invite everyone, or maybe there's a, you know, a focus meeting with, with the gas station, Taco Bell, miners, and the high school. That's to be determined.
But generally speaking, all members of the public would be stakeholders, under the definitions I read it.
Okay. Yeah, I would really, I would really assume that the businesses there would be stakeholders as well. And, and I think that this is really, if this goes, goes ahead, it's really going to be so detrimental to those businesses that are, are, you know, contribute heavily to our tax, you know, sales tax revenue. And, you know, that gas station and miners are big, big contributors. I think that for, for those of us that care about businesses, that that's a significant consideration. I, yeah, I will not change my, my mind on this. I still feel the same way.
Thank you, Councilmember Landrum. And I would, I will just make the assumption, Mr. Rogers, that that will also include the residents of the Mobile Home Park there as a given.
And Mayor, if I may just ask, Caltrans, there's, there's a question that I'm receiving, if Caltrans could just come up and make a statement about, I guess, the feasibility of the commitment to take over the project, should the city pass environmental and wish to make that transfer?
We are an advocate for this intersection improvement, and we support the transfer of the project after environmental determination to deliver design and construction, or if the city desires to keep it. And regardless of whether we're implementing or the city's implementing all the way through construction, all the partners and the seats at the table remain the same. That's how we deliver our projects.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm of the same mindset, I think, as Councilmember Landrum. I didn't support this project when it first came forward, and I appreciate the opportunity for Caltrans to take it over and save certainly this community that, that financial burden, and I appreciate that the money is not coming out of Q and E right now. My primary concern, I realize it addresses circulation, but my primary concern in that area is the pedestrian traffic, and, and I just have a lot of concerns about that, and that's not going to change. So I will look to one of my fellow council members if they want to make a motion, because mine would be in opposition, so.
I'd like to make a motion for staff's recommendation the city council approve and authorize the city manager to execute amendment number four, attachment one, to the existing amended agreement with GHD Incorporated for completion of the project approval and environmental document, P A and E D, phase of the intersection improvements at the state Route 41, State Route 1, and Main Street SR-41, SR-1 in Maine, and extend the contract through January of 2025.
And is there a second?
I'll second that. I'll third it.
I have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
No.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wickson?
No.
Motion carries 3-2.
Thank you, Mr. Donenzio, and Mr. Rogers, and Mr. Rideo, and Caltrans, and everyone for your input tonight. Appreciate it. With that, we'll move on to item C2, and I will turn this over to police and fire. Thank you. Are you tag teaming?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Give them a second.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council, and the community. Tonight, the city's internal working group is bringing forward a proposed ordinance to address one small issue that is related to the encampments and the garbage and the citywide debris. This is a small component of it, but it's something that we feel is important to address. We could, go ahead. So what we're looking at doing is adding chapter 8.15 to the Morro Bay Municipal Code, and this is related to providing, or preventing the unauthorized removal of shopping carts from retail establishments and to facilitate the retrieval of abandoned shopping carts. Go ahead to the next. I'm not sure what's happening with the PowerPoint there. Okay. So ultimately, what we have, this is meant to be a partnership between the businesses and the city, and the goal is to reduce the number of abandoned carts throughout the city and to get them returned to their business owners. This is not meant to be cumbersome or burdensome on the business owners, but it's meant to provide paths for us to address this issue. Having a technical difficulty with the PowerPoint here, give us just a moment.
Are these carts that are, have been collected by the city?
The image here are carts that are actively stored in the city lot that have been collected throughout the city.
Thank you.
No worries. Apologize for the delay here.
Do you have any jokes, Chief?
I am terrible with jokes. I'll have to call my daughter. She is the queen of dad jokes. I'll just, I'll proceed on while they're working on it. So initially, we were going to show some images of the shopping carts that are around town, and we're going to get into the summary of findings here. Give me. Give me 30 seconds to address this here.
I'll take a moment to do a friendly reminder right now about the Thanksgiving dinner next Thursday, the community center.
The home delivery started around 10:30, and pickup is between 1 and 3.
Home delivery at 10:30 and in-house between 12 and 3. Thank you.
1 and 3.
1 and 3.
And it looks like we're live here. So we'll go through a couple slides here, showing some shopping carts along Quintona Road. Go to the next. Just carts on Embarcadero, Moro Creek, next. Along Moro Avenue and Harbor Street, and then also along Quintona Road. Finding them at City Park and in the transit center, so they're impeding access to the transit, and then down in the creekway as well. So those are all images taken throughout the city. So for our summary of findings, the purpose of this ordinance, this is articulated why we're, we want to implement this ordinance. The intent of the ordinance is to benefit public health, safety, and welfare. It also maintains the aesthetic and qualities of the city by reducing the visible collection of discarded items. So we're looking to protect the streams and creeks, as you saw, those in the, in the waterways, reduces litter, clutter, and visual blight associated with the abandoned shopping carts. It diverts the cart waste from the landfills, ensures access and egress is maintained by not having the carts blocking driveways and access to facilities and properties, and it balances the rights of the businesses, the customers, and the general public. Next slide, please. So for an overview of the ordinance, there's some components of the ordinance that we're presenting. First is it requires signs and cart identification. Many of the businesses here are already complying with the cart ID requirements, and in the following slide, I'll show you an example of that. So as you can see it in Albertson's cart, they're already meeting the requirement on their carts. Go back to the previous. It prohibits unlawful removal of or abandonment of carts. And to answer some of the public comment and questions, yes, there are already laws against stuff of shopping carts, but this adds some definition to our municipal code and allows the city to cite individuals illegal in possession of shopping carts. This removes the burden of having to have a business owner press charges criminally against the person stealing the cart. It allows us to cite them administratively, and I'll let Chief Watkins elaborate more on that a little further on. This does put some requirement on the business owners to maintain their property by having a plan on how they're going to contain and care for their property. But then, and it does require a written plan from the businesses that will explain, you know, how they're going to lock their carts up at night, what their inventory is, how, what their process is for retrieving carts from the city when we find those out in public. And finally, the ordinance provides processes on how the city will impound those carts, how we will notify the businesses of these carts that we've found, and a process for them to reclaim them. There is a violation section, as with any, you know, law or ordinance, you need a way to enforce it, and this does address cost recovery, but this is for recovering costs that the city incurs for having to go out and retrieve and store these carts. The cost recovery citation is applied only to businesses that refuse to retrieve their carts after being notified that they're available pickup, or they refuse to comply with the ordinance. This is not, there are no fines or fees applied to businesses because there is an ordinance. It's only for gross failure to comply with the ordinance. This is not meant to be an expense to businesses. It's a partnership between the city and the businesses. The shopping carts are expensive. They cost the businesses a couple hundred dollars apiece. When we can return them to the businesses, that helps save them money. dollars apiece. When we can return them to the businesses, that helps save them money. You know, we're not trying to penalize with fines or anything. Without having these processes in place, we can't address the people stealing the carts or taking them off the property without difficulties, as Chief Watkins will get into. It also gives us a path for how we're going to notice the businesses and how they can get their property back. And it allows us some room to deal with the problem of them down in the waterways, the creeks, and on the roadways. Notices were provided to stores. We've identified six businesses within the city of Morro Bay that provide shopping carts to their customers. Chief Watkins and I have personally gone and talked to the business managers and store owners of all of those businesses, given them a written notice of this proposed ordinance, and invited them to come and speak at the council. And it was actually very well received. Some of the store managers we talked to are already taking steps to try to address this on their own, and really enjoyed the conversation about how to go about this and what we were looking to do. And so I felt it was a very positive reception on that. They see the benefit of this as well. And I'll turn it over to Chief Watkins to continue on.
Thank you, Chief McCray. Want to just go over some of the benefits of the ordinance. First, as Chief McCray mentioned, cooperation and collaboration between businesses and city departments. That's one of the things that we addressed with each of the businesses, certainly the managers. And all expressed an understanding and appreciation for the opportunity to work with the city on making this a better circumstance and situation for everyone. They don't want to lose their carts. With many, they expressed the gratitude for allowing them with this ordinance to provide five out of the six retail stores are corporations. And so what happens with this is when we come to the manager or the general manager, one of the things that they express to us is, this gives me the opportunity to reach out to corporate and say, hey, this is something that the city is now enforcing. We need to get on board with this. And many of them have expressed appreciation for that, because I think that unless, you know, their hand is somewhat forced in this situation, they have a difficult time expressing that to their corporate office. Many of these corporations have already dealt with this in communities across the country, really. If you go up and down the coast of California, even other states, you're seeing these types of containment systems already in place. And these are corporations that exist throughout our nation. Detailed mitigation plans from businesses is a benefit, plan to follow. It provides them a plan to follow. Training for the employees, which is part of some of the biggest issues that we have is just the employees understanding the impacts of uncontained carts. And then additionally, this addresses really the turnover that we see, certainly at a corporate level, of managers. When we went and spoke to Albertson's, the manager there is somewhat new to our, well, to Albertson's. He's a local and has been a local in Morro Bay for years as a young person, but he expressed certainly how he did differently. He does things differently from his previous manager, and his desire to work closely with the city and make this a priority for them. Another thing it does is increase awareness of impacts of uncontained shopping carts. Certainly just in our bringing this ordinance to council and the community, we've already seen a lot of people who are, have questions that hopefully we can answer with this presentation. But I think it's seeking to change the behavior of the population that's taking the carts as well. And currently, we don't necessarily have that ability under a city ordinance, which is much easier for us to enforce. And I'll talk about that in a minute. Enlist support for issues and concerns. And then, you know, the loss to the store when these carts are removed, they're generally written off as an insurance claim. That's still, that impacts what we pay for. It impacts the price of goods. It impacts, you know, the price of things that are related to the stores that we shop. So we're already seeing the impacts of this loss. And we're hoping that with preventing that loss and working closely with these retail businesses, that won't be seen as a write-off. It'll be seen as a responsibility for these businesses to maintain. It is their property, and it's their responsibility to maintain it and keep the burden off of the city. Decreased loss of shopping carts helps the business and therefore helps the community, helps the consumer. And then it also helps, you know, for those of us who certainly shop locally here, you know, you get certain carts that are, look like they've been, you know, through the wringer a few times and have been cleaned up and recovered and gone through that situation. And then public awareness, increased reporting of carts in neighborhoods. One of the businesses that we reached out to, they already have a somewhat of a mitigation plan, and their mitigation plan is the community calls them, and the store manager goes out, picks it up, removes the items in the cart, and washes it up and puts it back in service. So a lot of these stores are already doing some sort of containment mitigation plan. This provides them the opportunity to work with us, and if they have someone that's removing the cart from the property, call us. Let us come out and let us deal with it right then and there, and really kind of work in that collaboration with them to keep these carts where they belong. Anticipated impacts. Staff does not anticipate any impact to cities' general fund with this ordinance. However, without this ordinance, I think it's important to understand that currently the police department and public works staff are the ones handling these carts. So when you look at these photographs, this is a picture at our public works yard. There's close to about fifty carts there that have been collected by city staff, public works specifically. These carts here that you see, when these carts are picked up, they're picked up by public works, they're picked up by police department. So this is already, every time we touch one of these carts, that is affecting our bottom line. So I'm not, you know, that's one of the things in addressing with this ordinance is putting that onus back on the business that is their responsibility to take care of these carts, not the city. Businesses will need to provide abandoned cart prevention. Most, if not all, already possess this plan, training, policy, and management. They have the opportunity to receive this and work with their corporate office to get a better trained staff, get a better trained management, and help their own business keep these carts on their property. Save business money on cart replacement, like Chief McCray mentioned. These carts go from about $200 to $180 apiece. And what we've seen recently is they allow these carts to leave the property. They're not going out to get them. They just order more carts. So that puts the onus and burden on the city to pick up the carts, destroy the carts, fill our landfills with these metal carts and plastic carts. So environmentally, it's a better thing for them to hold on to their carts as well. And then keep Morro Bay city streets and the community safe and free from shopping cart blight and nuisance. You know, these things can reduce, you know, property values, for sure. I know that's a big topic. And it makes the city look not as beautiful as it needs to be. And then finally, we received certainly a lot of questions, and there were a few that I had already anticipated, but, so why do we need a shopping cart ordinance? Like I mentioned, currently, the burden falls on city staff. Ordinances in issues like shopping carts can be easier to enforce, allow for local buy-in to be effective. Local laws may be more sustainable over time when a policy is implemented to address a local problem and key stakeholders, local elected officials, and the community buy-in to the policy's solution. There is a greater likelihood that the policy will be successful over time. This is already a state law under Business and Professional Code. One of the things, so the law allows and mandates that these businesses take care of their property, take care of their shopping carts. What this ordinance does is it allows the city to take action on that. So that's one of the important things of why we need this ordinance. When local ordinances are passed, there's also an opportunity for increased awareness and changes in community norms to support enforcement. Like Chief McCray mentioned, this is a piece of a puzzle that we are trying to address and work towards in keeping Morro Bay beautiful and addressing the societal issues that we've all become very familiar with, certainly over the last few years. Why put the burden on business instead of holding the individuals responsible for theft or possession of the stolen shopping cart? So under the Penal Code section of theft or possession of stolen property, there are definitely a number of elements that have to be proven beyond a reasonable doubt for prosecution in a criminal court. Our district attorney's office is going to look at those elements, and if all of those elements haven't been satisfied, they will not move forward with filing that case. Additionally, under a Penal Code theft, it requires a victim. And as we've seen, certainly over the years, is many of these businesses, especially corporate businesses, they don't want to be involved in low-level theft crimes. Just simply walking into the business, taking something off a shelf and walking out, we will catch the individual, and they just want the property back. So even if, you know, it is something that we want, it's ultimately up to the business to decide if they're going to be a victim or not. And there are corporate policies that will not make that allowable to these store managers. And so with this, and the same thing goes with shopping carts, right? If somebody is in possession of a shopping cart that we know that they've stolen, or they're in the process of walking that cart off of the property with intent to steal it, I still have to have the owner of that property willing to be a victim and go through the court process. What we see is that is a barrier to enforcement. It happens daily. With the city ordinance, what this does is it takes the victim part out of it, and we can enforce that under the municipal code on the prohibition, which is if you take this cart, you can then be fined on an administrative citation, which comes with a fine, and then eventually can go to criminal court, depending on if the fine is paid. And then finally, how can the customer and community assist our wonderful businesses with this problem? Obviously, we heard a lot from the community over the past couple of days, and people are concerned about how this burdens the business. So one of the responses I had to that was, you know, return the carts to the store if possible. Don't leave them in the, outside in the containment areas, because as you see, people can come by. They don't have to approach the store. They can remove the cart. If you're walking at a distance, maybe consider taking your own cart. There's a lot of things that we as, as community members can do to help these businesses. And then contact the store to report abandoned carts. We already have one business that it has a very good relationship with their community around their store, and they get phone calls on a regular basis. And I'll tell you, it works because it's very rare that we see those carts in our creeks, in our encampments, or on the side of the road like you see here. It's very uncommon for us to see those carts. So what they're doing and the partnerships that they have with the community currently, it's working. And that's what we're trying to hopefully push with this ordinance, is work with these businesses. You can assist them in relieving that burden, and that's really what we're looking for. We're not looking to, you know, do excessive fines or things like that. It's just an opportunity for us as the city to present an ordinance so that we can do something about the issue that we're having. And with that, we'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. I have a couple questions. I'll start out. What is the timeline for retrieval once they're notified?
It's three days, seventy-two hours, which is written under the Business and Professions Code. We're not allowed to do anything with that cart until that seventy-two hours is met.
And that code is already existing, you said? That's a state law?
Yes. It's Business and Professional Code twenty-two, twenty-two four thirty-five to twenty-two four thirty-five point one-three.
So these aren't new rules. These are laws that are already in effect?
Correct.
Thank you. What department is going to be responsible for? Is this going to be split? Who do they submit the plans to? And who, and obviously PD's going to do the enforcement, I'm guessing, so.
So they'll submit the plan to the fire department, and then myself and the police chief will review the plan.
And who will, who's going to monitor? What department's going to mon, so they just do this plan once a year, only once, or, and is there a fee involved?
There's no fee to submit the plan. If the ordinance is enacted, then they'd have sixty days after the ordinance is enacted to submit the plan to us. And then if a new business opens that wants to have shopping carts after the ordinance is in place, then they would have thirty days from the opening of their business to submit the plan.
Thank you. Is the fine per cart? And if so, how much?
It's $50 per cart.
Okay. So we have up to almost fifty carts down there from the pictures, and I'm guessing theoretically, I would just say maybe twenty or twenty-five of those belong to one of our larger corporate businesses. So they just choose to not come pick up $5,000 worth of shopping carts?
Well, and that's where the notifications are made. So those notifications were made that we had those carts under the previous manager. And when we informed the current manager that we had about fifty of the carts or forty of the carts, he says, oh, I need those back. You know, it's, it's holiday season. So it's really the awareness. And that's the good part about the plan, is, you know, it's an annual check-in. But honestly, this is something that with notification of where the carts are, a lot of these businesses already enlist contracts with cart recovery companies. So hopefully, it will, with support of corporate and allowing, you know, our local stores to get these services, that'll take the burden off of city staff. So if we see a cart, well, you know, whoever sees it, whether it's an officer, a public works employee, you make that contact to the store. At that point, it starts the clock. And in seventy-two hours, we then can go out, collect the cart, and take it to city yard. We can take it back to them, and then we can find them at that point, if it comes to that.
What other, is there, obviously, I know there is, because I go shopping in San Luis, and you can't walk out some of the stores, because they have like a bumper on them. So are there other areas around us that already have these ordinances in place?
There are. So Paso Robles passed one, I think in twenty nineteen, twenty-twenty, and then San Luis Obispo passed theirs just a couple years ago.
Okay. Nobody else around?
Not that I've seen. Atascadero was considering one recently. I was just out at their corporate yard, and they have about the same number of carts at their yard as well. I can tell you that Santa Maria has one, although it's not in our county. And then Santa Barbara as well has one.
Okay.
I did a quick search this afternoon and saw at least thirty different cities in California that have similar ordinances as well, up and down the state, small and large cities.
Yeah, I see this. We got a lot of comments from it as if this was putting an unfair situation on the business owners. And I think that, you know, I appreciate the explanations you gave and understanding how this circles back to actually the bigger picture of it all. So with that, I will look to my right. Councilmember Landrum, questions? Councilmember Barton, questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Edwards?
I might have missed this, but what would a, a community member, what would be the process a community member would take if they found a cart somewhere?
They can call the store if that's the route they want to take. They're also, you know, they can call certainly the police department and notify us. One of our, one of the duties of our community service officer as of late has been a lot of cart collection and things like that. So if we get a call like that and our community service officer is working, that would be an appropriate response for him. And then he can notify the store at that time.
What is the feedback and success rate, maybe I'll call it that, of some of the other communities that you talked to with regard to these ordinances being put in place?
You know, I don't have those specifics. I think that any of the ordinances that you, you move forward with, one of the things that Morro Bay has that is special to other communities is the collaboration, the cooperation, and the ability for some of our city staff to still address some of these issues. So you can see communities that would pass ordinances like this, and it just leave it on the business. We have a better luxury, I think, here in Morro Bay to work closely with them. We have a better luxury, I think, here in Morro Bay to work closely with them. So I think even if we did have success rates in other communities, I think that whether it's unsuccessful or successful, I think Morro Bay is very specific in its needs and its community willingness and support, as well as the business support. I mean, we saw six retail businesses, and they were all very supportive of that. So that tells me that moving this forward as a piece of a bigger puzzle is going to put us in a good position.
Yeah, I can't tell you how happy I was to hear that part of your presentation about the businesses being cooperative and actually wanting to be a part of this. Thank you.
If I may just add to that, since we had our presentation with the store managers, I followed up with one store manager today, and since our previous discussion, they've already made contact with a private individual and worked out an arrangement that they can call them, and they'll go pick up carts for them. And so they're already moving forwards with some facets of this.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford, questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I want to thank both chiefs for all your homework and diligence in getting this moving forward. And I know it's just, as was mentioned, it's a small piece of the bigger picture and the bigger problem that we're facing, not just here, much broader problem. But I want to ask regarding carts that are found with personal items in them, what is the process of dealing with those personal items before they are put in a landfill or returned to the owner?
Right. So like any found property that officers come across or people call us to notify us about is, we would take a look at the cart. If it is obvious personal property that belongs to somebody, we would do our very best to try to identify anybody in the area that might claim that property. We can certainly look for identifying marks and features, see if we can get that property back to them. If we have property that is of value in that, and it's not trash, obviously trash gets thrown away. But if there is property that seems to be of value, we would secure that property and book it into the police department. And then if somebody were to come to us and say, hey, I had all my property in a cart, we would maintain that property for the standard 90 days. And as long as they come and talk to us and can identify something of property, then we could release it to that individual.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's the only question I have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's standard, isn't it, for property, 90 days?
Yes.
Thank you. There's no more questions. I'll open public comment. I do have one speaker slip. Jonathan King. Oh. Nope. Okay. Well, that public comment is open for item C2. See?
Madam Mayor, Terry Simons. As I was driving over here this evening after rushing home for a snack because of the short break, I happened upon a woman who was dragging a shopping cart full of stuff going up Morro Bay Boulevard, elderly woman struggling with it, and knowing what was on the agenda. It just kind of brought home a lot of thoughts. For several years in our neighborhood, and we are in a transitional neighborhood, so we have all kinds of issues in our neighborhood. We had a homeless person that would bring his stuff in and then abandon the cart, and I became what you call a retrieval service because I was, because I have a pickup truck, I would just throw the cart in the back of my truck and take it to the store. Store people always seem to be happy. I would tell them I'm returning it, so they didn't think I was stealing it. It's unfortunate that there are other people out there providing retrieval services. I saw it as a great retirement job here, but I guess I'm going to pass on that one. But in hearing the discussion and the fact that these are private property, and then there's a lot of public concern that we are abusing our homeless or unhoused population, and they're obviously breaking the law and stealing carts, and I'm wondering if we couldn't institute some sort of a program to provide a more effective and efficient vehicle through some perhaps grants from Miners Hardware or somebody, to provide a cart that a homeless person who needs this vehicle to move their stuff around, that could be given to them, loaned to them, whatever, through the auspices of the police or fire department, to eliminate their need for stealing a shopping cart, which isn't really a very efficient cart to move your possessions around, and the wheels are too small, they're not intended for moving possessions. So as we move forward with this, if it starts to generate some interest and some money, perhaps this is something that we can consider an accommodation of our homeless transient population. And as we take the carts away from them, we give them an opportunity to participate in some way by getting a city-approved homeless vehicle to move their stuff around. Just a thought. I'm crazy sometimes. I'm sorry.
Public comment? Oh, there we go.
Hello again, everybody. So I have to say, there was only one thought in my head when I saw that we were going to be trying to pass an ordinance to basically outlaw shopping carts outside of, you know, shopping. It was kind of the same thing that happened when I laid eyes on our new bus stop enclosure with built-in anti-homeless architecture. This appeared to me to simply be another way to make it easier to get those dirty, smelly transients off of our streets. I understand that this is not ostensibly what this is about. There are larger concerns here. But if I were living in that world that is so incredibly unlike the world that most of us are used to, that is undoubtedly the only conclusion that I personally could come to. The people that you will see dragging shopping carts up the street, theirs is a world of fear and mistrust, and honestly, that is our fault. We have not provided them the means to live healthy and comfortable lives, and we have not provided them the impetus to better their own lives. This is an excellent example because it is another reason for them to be afraid, walking our streets. I've never been afraid of a homeless person. As I said, I have been wary, and I am, do believe that I am capable of defending myself if somebody does come at me with ill intent. But I never approached these situations or consider them from a place of possibly having to do something forceful. If I am led to having to make that decision, I will, but I will never start from that place. Thank you, and have a nice evening.
Anyone else for public comment on item C2? A G P?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do not have any hands raised in the queue at the moment.
Thank you. With that, I will bring it back to council. Close public comment. And are there other questions or comments? To my left, Councilmember Ford.
I don't have any other questions. And I, other than, you know, the only comment, extra comment that I want to make is that I hear the concerns, you know, from our, you know, there were a couple of folks here tonight and also who have written in that are concerned about our unhoused population. And I just want to say that you're heard. I understand that we have a bigger issue here, and that, you know, more services, of course, are always needed for our underserved population and those that are in need. However, I also, as a leader in the city, have to also take into consideration the burden, the financial burdens and the amount of hours that it takes for our service members to handle situations where there are things like carts that are abandoned, and now what do we do with them? And I have to say, I personally had a couple carts right by my house that were just sitting there, and it was kind of like, oh, what are the next steps? What do we do? I mean, nobody obviously is using these, and they're just sitting there, and they're in the middle of the state parks land. And so, you know, having something in writing that helps our city know what to do when this happens, helps us as leaders know what to do when people ask us. And also, it sounds, from the sounds of it, because one of the questions I had written down, which was answered tonight, and I appreciate it, is what was the reaction from the business owners? And because it seemed like a lot of the pushback that we were getting was people being upset that we were punishing business owners. And so if business owners are interpreting this as something that actually is helping them to get what they need to function and to save money, then I see this as an overall positive move in the right direction. Of course, like any decision we make as council, you know, we might find later on that maybe this, you know, there's changes that could be made. But I think at this point, with the homework that's been done, the research, and overall input from other cities that have done this, that I think that this is a step in the right direction, and so I'll be supporting it this evening.
Member Edwards?
And I think that I would just reiterate something that you said, Chief Watkins, and that is that this is a step. This is just one of the steps in the many that I believe that we're going to be hopefully taking with regard to assisting the city and our community and those that are unhoused. So...
Councilmember Barton?
Whenever we're ready, I'd like to make the...
Councilmember Edwards? Landrum? Sorry. Councilmember...
I get, I see both sides of this. I see what people were talking about with the, it seems like it's punitive to businesses. I, too, am happy to hear that the businesses are in favor of this. That makes me feel better. It does seem ironic that we're enforcing one property owner, the businesses, but we're not enforcing the property owner of, you know, the Quintana property. Let's see. I agree with Chief Watkins that we should all take, you know, make sure we take our own carts back, and while you're doing it, grab a couple of them on your way, and that will help. I also remember, I'm old enough to remember, when grocery stores used to employ box boys, and they would take out your groceries for you and bring the carts back, and it was all just better managed, too. So maybe, maybe this will create new jobs. I don't know.
Thank you. And I like the idea that was brought up by one of the speakers, is, you know, there's plenty of service organizations that do a lot of outreach in our community, as has been shared. We have great partners, and that's how something like this works with our city, is that, you know, some of these service clubs, when we've talked in the past about providing shelter, whether it's smaller tents and things that are less imposing, sleeping bags, you know, you can get a wagon or a cart or something, and we can look to some of our nonprofit partners and service clubs in the community for some of that support so that it still provides an opportunity for them to transport their personal belongings without stealing the carts from the businesses. So, great suggestion. Thank you. And with that, Councilmember Barton, you wanted to make a motion?
Yeah. Let's see. Introduced for first reading by title only, with further reading waived, Ordinance Number 663, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay, California, amending Title VIII Health and Safety of the Morro Bay Municipal Code to add Chapter 8.15 pertaining to the unauthorized removal of shopping carts from retail establishments and to facilitate retrieval of abandoned shopping carts.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
I have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wixom?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you both chiefs for your work on that, and hopefully this is the beginning of many steps to come, and I appreciate all your work, and I know you'll be back next month, I think, with some more. So thank you for that. Seat four, and I will turn that over to the city manager, City Council Policies and Procedures.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this policy was drafted at the request of the City Council upon Councilmember Landrum's specific request regarding use of resources. In the last couple months, a couple council, individual council members had wanted, had decided to conduct public outreach programs, which is very, very helpful for the community and for, for staffs, to support staff understanding of the issues. However, they, the unknown was, we didn't know how, staff was not sure how to address the use of facility, use of resources properly, because apparently there's no, no specific policy on this matter. And it was my understanding that in the past, council members, when having these kind of outreach sessions, and the council members would use a private venue such as a coffee shop and so on and so forth. But this time, we, the city, city facilities was, were utilized. So with all that consideration, and city clerk reached out to other cities and then did some research, and then we find, we put a couple options out there for, for council to consider. And not shall, being a public, the cleanest thing toward use of a public facility is really just elected officials shall now use public resources. And then we give some alternatives, something for city to consider if, if the use of research policy aside, staff felt that perhaps the most practical way to handle individual outreach would be for council member to bring, bring before the city council, to ask for the city council, to get an endorsement for certain subject to be, to be discussed. And from that point on, it's become city council direction, and staff can take, take over, make the plan, and help city council member, particular council member to make the planning, to prepare for the meeting, the research, and everything associated with it. So with that, I hand it back to the council for your...
Thank you, City Manager Kimball. I will start with questions to my left. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager Kimball. I do have a question regarding, you know, if we do, if we do adopt options, you know, there's option one or two, or probably anything that we, in between. I'm looking at number two here, and it mentions that members shall expressly state that they are not representing the council or the City of Morro Bay unless expressly authorized by the council. So is this suggestion that we would have to like bring it for, they would have to bring it forward as an agenda item and ask for our approval if they want to be labeled as Councilmember Ford, who's hosting an event? Or if, and if we don't do that, would we have to just be Jen Ford, resident of Morro Bay, hosting a town hall? Like, I'm just curious if, you know, if that could be clarified. And then my other, yeah, and then my other question is that if we do go the route of option two here as well, where it mentions, you know, expressly stating this, does that also include, does that, would that include saying it out loud prior, you know, to your audience before you start the event? And would it also include any written material such as like invitations or announcements, that sort of thing? So those are my questions regarding that. And I don't, I don't really have any other questions right now. I'm interested in hearing what everyone else has to say about it. So that's it.
Which one? Are you tag teaming?
I know.
I know.
In response to your question, Councilmember Ford, on option two, this captures what is best practices, which is that if a council member is acting as an individual and hasn't been authorized to speak on behalf of the council or the city, then it's generally recommended that they make sure that the public know. So for example, if a council member were to hold some sort of public forum, and it was on their own initiative, the public should understand that it's that individual council member doing this, rather than they're speaking on behalf of the City Council. So this captures something that I've just recommended to council members over the years anyways, informally, when I've been asked this question. And if somebody wants to say they want to represent the council as a body, then, you know, you need council authorization. This is equivalent to, council members are always able to send letters to state representatives, federal representatives, expressing their own opinion, and they can sign it as council member, you know, X. But to send a letter on behalf of the council, we authorize that, or we have a policy that if it's in alignment with, like, the League of California City Positions, whatever, the mayor can already send those out. So that's, that's what this does, is it captures best practices, but it puts it in the policy.
Okay, so my other, so that does answer most of what I was asking. So the other question I had was, if they do want to speak on behalf of council, just in the future, if we were to go with an option two, then they would have to, we would have to come forward with an agenda item to ask, or how would that, how will we go about speaking on behalf of council, is what I'm trying to get at?
Well, already, the current, I think, practice and procedure is that if one of the council members says, "I am speaking on behalf of the Morro Bay City Council," there would need to have been some sort of agreement by the council that they could do that. So this is, again, just capturing in the policy and procedures what is already best practices that's been recommended.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
I think I can't, thank you, Senior Attorney. I think I can probably add to that. I see what you're saying, and then I think it depends if, do you really have to, if one of the individual council member wanted to talk about something, that, do you really need to bring a council meeting request? It depends. If it's already stated, you're already, like, for example, today, tonight, for example, the shopping cart ordinance, the first reading, that has been, been approved by the entire council, and then so if, if you, tomorrow, it happened to be your individual, whatever meeting, and you're gonna say, yes, the City Council had spoke about that, so that's okay, because council has already said that, made a motion, and then that was clear. But however, if tomorrow, your individual outreach was about something else, and then about provide, provide, say, additional services, for example, we're gonna, having an area designated for tiny home, and, but that has, that has not been discussed, and you don't know what City Council's position, so you would just say, well, you couldn't say yourself, you wouldn't, you know, I trust any of the council members would not, to make a statement that you don't know what your colleagues may feel about.
Okay, so, so to even further clarify, so if we are, let's say I want to host an event to invite people and to get their opinions on something, or to hear community output, and just be like a listening session, would I, would I need to put a disclosure, or was this up to us if we want to require a disclosure for, like, the invitation or any printed materials that are inviting people to come, to make them aware that it's not a city event necessarily, but it is a council member-specific event? The only, the reason I'm asking for this clarification is I just want to make sure that it's really clear, that if any one of us does host an event on our own, that it is truly, you know, like you said, if it's something new, not something that we've already discussed, it's not like, oh, this is what we just voted on, but this is something, we just want to get your opinion on, whatever, that we make sure that it's very, you know, clear that it is just, it's not the city putting out the information, that it's just the individual. So I'm just curious, like, like, how would that work?
Can I interject real quick? Excuse me. We're talking specifically in city property, so what you do somewhere in public property, other than representing as a council, you know, we're talking, this is specific to city property.
Correct.
That may make a difference.
So if we're having, yeah, so if we're hosting something, let's say here?
Yes, to the mayor's point, this is a policy for when you have city property, or there's a minimal use of public resources that, you know, are, like, if you're going to use Vets Hall, which, you know, is available to the public in general, and you're going to be here, you're not going to be creating a misrepresentation that you're speaking on behalf of the council, you're speaking for yourself. The council could, of course, modify this language to have it state that this requirement only applies if, if in the council member's, you know, reasonable opinion at the time, there might be confusion on whether they're speaking for themselves or the council, you know? So I mean, that, that could be added there, so there isn't this requirement, you know, to always do a disclaimer. But the mayor's point, this is only if you're using city property anymore.
Right, well, and, because my concern is if we are using city property, it comes across as more of a city event.
Absolutely, and that's why this was put in here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so, so I'm just, okay, so...
I mean, I, sorry to interrupt, but I think it's understood that in most contexts, if an individual council member is presenting something, folks often will understand whether they're speaking on behalf of the city or the council member, and council members, you know, at their discretion, you know, may sometimes say, and just to be clear, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for the council, a lot of times it's understood. So this could be reworded to where there isn't like some requirement that you always state this, because the context matters.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Can I, can I clarify a point that was just made? Though, it's not, it's not city property, we're not just talking about city property, we're talking about city property unless you, if you pay for it, that's different, correct? Yeah. So you, yeah, it's not just city...
It's access that would not be afforded someone else, correct? Thank you. No, you can pay for it. You can rent a building to host an event that you're doing for campaigning, correct? The same as any other citizen.
Sure, yeah, the intent of this last sentence here, which is optional, is to maintain the prerogative of the council to speak for the council, and to make sure that, you know, when there's a situation where it's unclear, that council members say, you know, I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I mean, there are some issues in the city where there isn't a unanimous opinion, unanimous agreement amongst the council members. What we could do is add to this, you know, at the end, you could put like, comma, if a reasonable person, if a reasonable person would be unclear on who the council member is speaking for, something like that, and then it's just up to the council member. Or you could just not have this in here, you know? The only other difference, option two adds to private gain and personal purposes, it adds political advantage, electioneering, so. And as the staff report discusses, City Clerk reviewed other policies, and option one seems to be a common one, and then option two is something that other items were added for alternatives to be considered. So to go with option one would be to go with what a lot of other cities have.
Thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Edwards, questions?
Having been somebody who just recently, in October, did a listening session myself, I utilized the studio, what's called the studio, off of the rec center, community center building, and I had approximately 30 people there. It was very clear via flyer that I made that I was there to listen to their particular neighborhood, their concerns, issues going on that are impacting them. Before, before I actually, when I got introduced by the person that I had representing, like, getting the people together, it was very clear that I was there to listen. And so I personally felt like in that situation, I made it clear that I wasn't representing council, it was me being there actually to, to gather information and to try to just, that could also be taken back, I did say, that could be taken back to staff, to distribute to departments, to have a better understanding of what's going on within that neighborhood. So, I don't know, that's just the example of how I just utilized it, that particular property of ours. And so I'm happy that we're talking about this, because I definitely want to continue being able to do that, but I, I absolutely don't want it to be perceived in the wrong way, so I'm glad we're talking about this.
Councilmember Landrum?
I agree with Councilmember Edwards. I, I think it's really important to continue doing this. It was one of council goals to, council's goals to increase community engagement, and I feel like this is a way of doing that, like, you do it however you want. Some councils, some cities have council, you know, better amenities, and council members have their own office, they have their own staff. We don't have any of that, so we're very limited here. I mean, so, you know, it doesn't seem like we should be punished for that, for not having a better city hall facility. And then as far as public resources, as a use of public resources, does that mean that, like, in that same, if you follow that same trajectory, or that same concept, then, you know, are we not to go to city hall after 4:00? Are we not, are we not to go to city hall on Fridays? Because the public doesn't have access to that. I mean, I don't know, you could take it, you could, you know, I don't know. I think that we could work out some way to, to make this, this work for, I mean, I think it's a positive thing, I guess you could see, I guess, I'm trying to think of where it would be negative, and if someone maybe were, yeah, campaigning, or like, I don't know, having a party or something, I don't know, but, you know, otherwise, and really, you could be campaigning, like, that's, you could be campaigning in your office, or you're, it's kind of a fine line, and I guess we just have to, I mean, we're all here, you would hope that we're ethical, but I don't know, it's just, those are just some of my thoughts. I mean, I've, I've been holding the meetings, I've spent my own free time doing them, it's a lot of work, actually, for me, to engage the city. I mean, I feel like it's kind of like the work of a consultant. We pay a lot of money for people to do these sorts of things. And, you know, I'm donating my time, and Councilmember Edwards did the same thing. For some people, I think council meetings can seem stifling and intimidating, and the times may not work for them, and, you know, I think this is an option for them. I have no budget and no agenda, other than to hear how people in our community feel regarding different topics, and the, my meetings are completely open to anyone, I don't limit or restrict who can come. I'm motivated to hold them, because I'm trying to fill a void that I have felt before being elected to council. I hadn't felt like anyone listened or cared to how I felt, so I'm attempting to give people the opportunity to tell me how they feel. I provide note cards and ask that they offer suggestions for future meetings, and the response has been very, very positive, so.
If I can interject, to Councilmember Landrum's point, council could consider providing a specific budget for each council member, actually to use some limited public resources for outreach. You know, it is true that, you know, some cities do provide staff, and they have their own offices and whatnot. And also, option one, that seems to be a common one, according to the research done by city staff, it's limited to, members shall not use public resources unavailable to the public for private gain or personal purposes. So specifically excluded from there is, you know, community engagement, public purposes. So, you know, this is, this is simply saying that you can't use public resources for private gain or personal purposes. So what Councilmember Landrum was describing, and I know the outreach effort she's done, and I know Councilmember Edwards has done, a lot of you have done, you know, those were in the spirit of acting as an elected leader and engaging with the community, so that's not for private gain or personal purposes. So, you know, this option one doesn't apply there. There could be other options brought forward to address the issue of when council members for community engagement purposes should have access to some limited resources to engage with the public, and that would be entirely a council decision on whether that came back to council.
Member Barton? Questions?
This is a valuable discussion, because some good points have been brought up, that we don't have, you know, limitless resources here, and how to communicate better with the public. So I think it's a good thing, but I'm not sure that we're done with the discussion yet. So I think it's going to be a to-be-continued kind of a thing.
I, I appreciated Councilmember, oh, sorry, can I just say one last thing? Sorry.
A question?
Well, I just, I wanted to say I appreciated Councilmember Ford's comment about the, making sure that it's, it's really announced and noticed that, you know, it's, it's not, you know, that you're acting on your own. I think that's a good point.
I will open public comment on item C4.
Mayor, we're at about 9:30, just a reminder.
Got time for three minutes more?
Yes, we do. We're close. Go ahead, Terry.
Madam Mayor, I'm excited to be here for this item. I, I'm very empathetic with Councilman, Councilperson Landrum's obvious concern that this is going to be the Landrum Law, and I, from my perspective, speaking as an individual, not representing the entire community of Morro Bay, I can say from my perspective that this is not the Landrum Law. This is an attempt to try to set some policies that everybody can live with, and what I'm hearing across the board on the council, you should not be concerned, Zara, this is not being aimed at you. Don't take it personally, these are, these are just the way the system works. The important thing here, I think, is I've been to two of Councilman Landrum's information sessions or meeting, town hall meetings or whatever, and I went to them enthusiastically, I thought that the turnout was wonderful. I think that there is an additional leverage that the community benefits from when it's done in a community facility, because it seems more important, and we're trying to get people to be coming, where are they all? You know, I just, it's sometimes frustrating to be here at 9:30 at night, and there's only two other people in the audience, and sit through these meetings, but I'm enthusiastic about trying to build public support for this council and for the process. And so Zara's doing a wonderful job, and I have not unfortunately been able to make it to your information sessions, but once I know when they are, I'll try to get to those, too. But no, let's, I was encouraged to see that there were no punitive sanctions or anything written into the ordinance that was proposed, and also, I would discourage any effort to limit the number of opportunities that any particular council person, who is a volunteer, basically, to enhance the presence of the, of the council in the community. A council person speaking in a public facility, representing herself but to the benefit of the public, I think is very important. If they take a strong, particular stance against a particular issue, well, that may be considered political, it'd also be considered just getting out there and trying to motivate the public to, to talk about stuff. So as I'm one who likes to talk about stuff, evidenced by my continued presence here at this time of night, but I've got 21 seconds left, I just want to say, Zara, hang in there, and Cindy, keep doing them, too, and I'm looking forward to your first public outreach, Jen, I think we'll see how that one goes, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Council permission to go past 9:30 to finish this item?
Yes.
Council permission to go past 9:30 to finish this item? Thank you. Public comment is open.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff. Jeff Heckles, I'm a resident of Morro Bay, I live in North Morro Bay. I think this is a great idea and a great discussion. I think using the facilities helps facilitate community engagement, as was mentioned. I think there's one area, though, that, that puts us on thin ice, and the city attorney mentioned it, that's during campaign season and the possibility for electioneering or campaigning. So I would suggest that the discussion look at perhaps a time period. I don't know if there's an official campaign period, but... there's an official campaign period, but three months, 90 days, six months, four months, some official period, time period before an election should probably be considered where a candidate that is a sitting council member wouldn't have that privilege. Because if someone were running from the community and had to pay for the facility, and a sitting council member could have, really, the very same outreach topic, and have the opportunity to have the facility for free, that may create an uneven playing field within that campaign period. Otherwise, again, the fact that we're using city facilities for sitting council members to engage the community more is only a good thing. So, thank you.
AGP, is there anyone in the queue?
Thank you, Mayor. We have no raised hands.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. So I might take my turn to chime in. Thank you, Mr. Echols, because when I get ready to campaign, then I can manipulate how I want to do a town hall meeting. And I wouldn't do that, because I would like to think I have higher ethics, but that doesn't mean the next person, or the next person, or the next person down the road. We're talking about setting a policy which can be changed, but nonetheless is a policy. I'm not, our council goals, which we just moved to next month to just readdress, has been important to all of us for transparency. And I feel in this year that we've been here, the five of us, we have exceeded that, whether it's through our shared meetings that we've been holding that have not been held for years, or the workshops and other things, along with, you know, the listening sessions that the two councilmen are doing, all bring value on community participation. My concern is always going to circle back to perception of a benefit that someone else is not receiving. And therefore, is that a gift of public funds? Is that a gift of privilege? That because we're sitting council members, we're still just a citizen, the same as anybody else, we were elected, we spend hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours, but we're also compensated with the stipend and some benefits, minimal at best, but that's irrelevant. We accept this as a civic position. So I worry about the perception in the community of, I can use this Vets Hall, and I don't need to pay for it, because I want to share information, which is important. I agree, we all agree. I've been to the sessions, and I've held them. But the next person who may want to do the same thing has to pay for it. Maybe they want to hold a listening session, maybe they want to get involved in something as an advocate in the community. So I just, I'm concerned about what that perception is. It's all fine until somebody doesn't follow the rules, and does something that's taking a position on an item. This is my concern. I like the idea, there was a comment, or somewhere in there, about a limited use of the resources. If the council majority is going to go down this path, for me personally, I just feel like there's other opportunities. I'm just not, I'm, I will not be doing it. I'll find other resources, or I will pay, because I don't ever want that perception to be that, and I know from serving for four years before, that that exists. It just does. There's libraries to use, there's banks to use, there's a city park to use, there's service clubs and things that can be utilized for those meetings. So, so, you know, I just, if the council majority is going to move forward with that option two, I would hope that we would definitely put restrictions on the amount of resources, that it's not, it's staff time that's needing to be utilized at some level, and the facilities. So as long as it's not displacing someone else that would be renting it, and, you know, five times a year, four times a year, six times a year, something, you know, limited, I would hope that would be included. But, but for me personally, and I have all the respect in the world for my fellow council members, but I won't support option two. I'm, you know, and I may be the dissenting one here, but I just feel that I don't want there to be a perception that there's a benefit that we receive, someone else doesn't. So with that, I will move to my left or right, whoever wants to jump in there and have comments, questions, or motion.
I think, this question might be for a city clerk, with regard to something that was just mentioned in public comment. Would it behoove us to utilize kind of what that people submit for campaigning, like, they're entering? Is that timeframe maybe something we could factor in?
Certainly, yeah.
Which is like a-
From the opening of the nomination.
Yeah, like in August or something to, I can't remember, July?
Mid-July.
And also to confirm, these two options here, neither of them right now, before the council, are to provide for a budget. Option one is just simply saying that, it's saying that for private gain or personal purposes, you can't use personal, you can't use public resources unavailable to the public, and that hasn't been happening anyways. Option two basically says that, and then adds, "or for political advantage," and then includes that thing about stating before an event expressly that I'm here, you know, as one council member, not here for the whole council. It would be another option, which isn't listed here, to talk about doing some sort of budget for each council member, and that that would be at the council's discretion, to either discuss that tonight, add it, bring it to another agenda.
Wouldn't we talk about that during budget? We, we're pretty slim on financing right now.
Yeah, I'm just exploring.
When we have a council budget already, that you're talking about for individual council-
I'm just throwing out different options, you know, without giving an opinion on, you know, whether it's good or bad. It's just, it's an option.
I'm just, I just would like clarity on what the budget would be for. Like, for instance, with, with me, I didn't, the only resource I used was the Vets Hall, or the community center, the Vets Hall. I brought my own microphones. I brought my own, you know, I guess I used the tables and the chairs, but-
It's just an option for council to consider. It's in response to the, I think, the well-stated point that Councilmember Landrum made, that right now, the council members don't have access to staff or offices. And so, in lieu of that, one option is to have a limited budget. So at a town hall event, maybe you could have refreshments. You know, I'm not sure what you'd do with your budget. I mean, this isn't even in the staff report. I'm just throwing out options to promote community engagement, you know, but it's just an option.
Well, I'm certainly not asking for a budget. I just, I just, you know, it, the facility is, and like, like the public has said, it, for one thing, it's very convenient for people. It feels safe for people. It's not, you know, there's no, like, if we're at a church, that doesn't offend certain people, you know what I mean? It's a safe place for people. I don't see any, I really like the idea of, around an election, I think that's a good idea, to kind of safeguard things. But otherwise, I don't see what, because you could have the same appearance and just pay for the room, but you could still appear like you were a council member, and-
If you paid for the room, you can do whatever you want, though.
But I mean, what's-
Restrict-
Right. But you're still, the perception is still there. The only people that know who paid for the room are the city and you. No one else knows.
They do public records.
Yeah, but-
You know, I mean, I'm just, I'm being the devil's advocate here, that's all. I'm not, you know, and I would, and I just think, so, so you'd think that allowing monthly use, then, there shouldn't be any restriction to an amount of uses of it? I mean, there's five of us, so-
Yeah.
We all wanted to use it every month. It seems like, huh?
I know, that's a good point.
It would be excessive. You know, I would, I would hope there would be some sort of limited, you know, six, six meetings.
Well, when I, when I reserved the room, I made sure that there was no other use, and that I wasn't taking, I never want, I did not want to take over any money that the city might be earning. So I don't know how to make that work.
I'm not a toy, is that you did?
Okay, can I, can I provide some comment? Okay, so, to Mr. Simon's request for me to come forward with something like this, I will revert back to what I originally did. This is an interactive session here, right? And so I can say from experience that I did the coffee, come meet me for coffee, you know, every month I hosted something, and I went from different coffee houses to make sure I spread the love. And, and I have to say that, you know, depending on where, you know, there might have a really big turnout, and I'd have, like, one person, Linda, wave over there, Linda. She, of course, came to a few. And, and so, my point is, is that I think that I may have had more of a pool, or more, people may have, like, Councilmember Landrum, sorry, thank you, without this curve, it's like I can't see anyone. And so, you know, it may have given it a little bit more oomph if I was to say I'm having it at the Vets Hall, or if I'm having it at the community center, or, I love the idea, the library, or something like that. And so, you know, I can see the benefits of having it in a facility that people are familiar with, that they associate with somebody that's there to give them important information, or to be a great listener as a representative of the city, instead of just, you know, Councilmember Jen Ford, sitting at the coffee house, hoping people will show up, you know, in this little tiny, tiny area. And so, and so, that's just kind of some history from that. I do see the benefit of having these types of forums, and these listening sessions, those sorts of things, in larger areas. And I can say, as a person who doesn't currently have a, a, oh my gosh, I don't have money in a candidate account, you know, I don't have money in that. And so, I know that, like, people use that money for things throughout the year. Well, I closed mine out. I was, you know, I used all of my funds. And so, it would be coming out of my pocket. And so, I have to think about being accessible to all council members in the future, moving forward. No matter what our financial situations are, I want to consider future council members as well, and who might be coming forward, and being, you know, welcomed into our community as a council member. And they may not have the personal funds to do something like this. And so, unless I do get creative and do use free facilities, like the library and that sort of thing, I do see the benefit of having the ability to use our facilities at no cost. I do see the burden of using more than just a facility, and budgeting, that's difficult. We never know what that's going to look like. So I do agree that, I think that it should be available. I admire what both of you are doing. I think it's a great benefit for our city. I do think that there maybe should be a limit to how much we are using our city resources, on, you know, and I most certainly will support the candidate restrictions. Thank you, Mr. Echols, for that suggestion. I think that it's really important. It kind of safeguards us, and nobody wants that suspicion, anyway. And so, with all that being said, I can see where, I feel as though there is some way for us to make a great policy that doesn't just fit the needs of what we're currently doing, but what if we have an engaged panel, or council in the future, that all five people up here want to do these sessions on a regular basis? It can get pretty crowded. And it could possibly take away from revenue that the city could take in if we're booking all these rooms and doing that sort of thing. So I agree, there needs to be some sort of limitation on how many sessions you can book, or how many times you use a facility. And I do believe that there should be parameters on when it's allowed. That's where I'm at.
So twice a quarter use-
So, I mean, I guess if we look at a year, four quarters, maybe twice a quarter, I mean, I guess I'm just trying to weed the list down. Meaning, what, six times a year? Is that what we're trying to get to?
Per council member?
Per council member.
I wouldn't want to exceed that because-
That's fine, that works for me.
Yeah. That's 30, that's, no, I know.
The other, the other, so I thought about it, like, I could pay myself, or I could have-
Donation.
Donations, or, but then you run the risk of looking like you have special interests supporting you, or you have your own motive, you know, your own agenda that you're trying to promote. So I feel like the cleanest way, and the most honest way, really, is to do this, this way, because then you are, you know, no matter where we are, at all times, we are council members, and so we all, you know, have that all the time. So, you know, I don't know. It's, they're just-
So, I think, lastly, and I would just say, I mean, in particular, with my listening session, I backed up against, I think, a church group that basically got to leave their tables and their chairs out, and I just kind of came in and used what was out, and then we put them away ourselves. So, I mean, I think that we're saying, we, yeah, but what I mean is, I think we would be cognizant of if another group was coming in or going out, or if the room was needed for another van. I don't mind being bumped, I guess, is my point. So-
And that could be another caveat that could be added, that you're required to do your own setup and breakdown. Certainly, there would be no staff.
Sure.
Yeah, which, yeah, you did, too, you know, so there's not staff. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, I do, I do. Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to say that these sessions, that the town hall, the listening session, I, we staff appreciate council members' thoughtfulness, and very considerate, trying to dive in with some other existing, existing booked events, and then, so then you don't have to create actual work. We appreciate that. I do want to, I do want to provide a staff perspective on our support, how we support council, individual council members, and with your effort, your individual outreach effort. Usually, when council member want to do these things, and a council member will say, yeah, this is my subject. And then, being, so, being intelligent self, you are, and you would have a list of questions. So you're going to send it to us, and then, respect, the department will read that, and they'll, they'll get the answer. And I think somewhere in the, in the policy I didn't bring with me, talk about, staff time is a resource, and then they talk about how much staff time can be allocated to individual council member. And, and a lot of times, when you, when you gather questions, you, you're, you certainly is not trying to burden staff too much. You think your questions are straightforward, should be just really easy to, to answer. And, and sometimes they're that way, sometimes they're not. So then, that's, but that takes time. That takes staff time away from what they're doing already. And then, every department has fullness, as, you know, as council members start to see, and I start to see. So that's part of that. And now, we're, if the staff has been seasoned, has been working together longer, it may not be a bigger issue, because everybody, you know, have a institutional knowledge, oh, yeah, there, here, we'll just pull it and get it together. City council members also need to be, I know you know, we're a new team, and not, we're not in sync ourselves. So we don't even know, like, for example, I received some questions, oh, yeah, this is straightforward, and then by the time I get the answer, it's like, why this answer, I still do not get this answer. I can see city council member, council member here getting anxious, well, I'm getting this, I have this in two days, and I'm not getting my answer together. And then, when I start talking with staff, and then I find out, oh, wow, there's this obstacle, there's this challenge, and things that I, I'm, as a city manager, a new city manager to this town, I didn't even, oh, yeah, I can see that. So, also allow this time. And then, so that's the staff time, and then, once you decide which time you want the room, and the booking, and it just, just get it booked. And usually, those individual outreach sessions are in the weekends, and so we have to make sure that the keys, you have access to the room. Now it is okay. In winter comes, it's probably going to be cold, and then the heat perhaps need to be turned on prior to, prior, you know, warm the room up before you get in, and then afterwards, and you can turn it off. But prior to, to, you know, to the time of your meeting, somebody need to come here, get a turn, yes, council member could come maybe an hour sooner, and to turn on the heat, the light, whatever, get it ready. Those are just the things that, excuse me, staff have to deal with. It's, is it really a lot of work? It's perspective. It's perspective. I heard councilmember Edwards suggesting every other month per person, so it's just five of you, means that each of you have six allowances. So, that's together, that's thirty events for us on the side to plan for, and even the weekends. It does adds up. Again, I don't have answer how to, you know, the best, the best, the best policy language. I would suggest, though, perhaps the most straightforward way, without a policy, anything like that, just if city council member, you want to do the individual outreach meeting, you think ahead, you bring before city council as a whole, and then, from that point now, city council can authorize, and then we'll take it over. All the things you... It becomes a city event, because city council has authorized, and then we work with individual city council member to set up the room and all the logistics stuff, and we deal with it. And your question is sort of become council direction, so we'll just have to work on it. We may ask, give us enough time for us to gather all the information for you, but, you know, just take planning.
Can I make a... Okay. So, listening to, you know, you putting it into perspective, City Manager Kimball, the amount of staff time that it takes, even when you're not asking for staff to come set up and do those sorts of things, there's still requires, there is still an element of staff prep that goes into helping council members get ready for these meetings, as well as other fees that we don't think about, like heating and lighting and those sorts of things that go into the factors, besides the fact that we're just renting the facility for free. My question is, is if, as a suggestion, would it make sense to limit, you know, the types of... Okay, I'm trying to think how to word this. I'm thinking out loud here. So, if it takes so much time for staff to help prep for an information forum from a council member, because I think there's a kind of a difference between, like, I can tell you that when I would do coffee house sessions, like, I was just there to listen. I wasn't there to provide people with information, and if they asked me questions, you know, and I don't know the answers, then I could find out if it was, you know, but they were more just listening. So, I'm curious if council members, you know, I do think, appreciate the fact that our council members have, like, prepped and been ready for certain specific topics, but what if we limited those to where we're providing facts and things like that and being prepared for responses? What if we limited that, but didn't limit necessarily just listening sessions? And, you know, do you get what I'm saying? Like, I feel like there's less prep if we're there just to... If that's the premise of the session.
That's what they've been doing.
Yeah, I think I can clarify, I can... City Manager Kimball wasn't... Was speaking about me when I had the first listening session on short-term rentals, and that's... My last one, I didn't ask for any information from the city, the one on offshore wind. Then, the only reason I needed the information on short-term rentals was to... Because people needed to know how many we had. I mean, it's really actually public information that I asked for. It was something that I would assume would be easy to access and get. It wasn't like I was asking for top-secret information. It was, like, really basic things that we didn't have, and I feel like we maybe addressed a problem in doing that. And, you know, another reason that I even had that one is because it's been, it's going to be coming up as a future agenda item, and I feel like, you know, we need to start figuring out how people feel, and that's where I was going with that. And if we didn't even know, as the city, what our numbers were and all the information on that, then I feel like that's a huge problem. So, I feel like that was a good thing that we, you know, we got.
So, again, I appreciate you clarifying that. When we create a policy or an ordinance, we're not just creating it for our current personalities and what we're doing, we're creating it for all future. So, I think we need to take that into consideration, that one council member in the future may be like, "Yeah, before I go into any meetings, I want lots of prep, and I want to ask staff a million questions." And so, I think we need to really be careful about the use of our staff time for individual sessions on behalf of yourself. So, I think, when we consider how to develop this, we need to take that into consideration, that you may not require that much staff time, you may not require that much staff time, I may not, any of us may not, but in the future, somebody might. So, I think that that should be at the forefront of, because we know how strapped our staff is for a time. And so, over burdening them, I like to have retention. And so, that's important to me. So, I think we need to take that into consideration when we think about how many events that we do have as individuals. So, but still, what I said before, I still think it's really valuable and all of those things. So, I don't know, still don't know where to go.
So, we could look at option two, limiting use of resources in regards to staff time, and that it's not allowed during campaign season, and that you're allowed up to X amount four per council member per year. But, I mean, you can talk about housing, homelessness, STRs, wind, whatever, something, you know, and after that, you're going to go to the libraries or the coffee shops, or you're going to, whatever it is, and you don't have to, but up to whatever number it is per year per council member.
Can I ask a question? How will that work? So, say, okay, for instance, if, whatever the number was, some, a council person wanted to do more, and they wanted to pay for it or get, go to a library or whatever, but they still needed information. So, are they not allowed to ask staff or the city manager for the information?
It's not unreasonable to ask information, that we don't have this public information. I'm not saying that, I'm saying restricting, that we shouldn't, you know, the idea is that we're not...
Well, we're talking about staff time.
Limited.
Right, so, maybe the council member wanted to do one a week. I mean, maybe they wanted information just for themselves, like, how, where are we limiting the information that we get? Like, in everything, or just for a town hall meeting, or a listening session? Like, I'm confused on that.
I think for town hall meetings or listening session, or whatever verbiage you want to use for it.
But we can ask...
For these events that you're going to host.
But we can ask staff for any information, like, normal, other times, just not if we're calling it a...
Well, you usually ask staff for items on the agenda or future agenda. We don't usually ask.
Well, if the public asked me a question, if someone emailed me and asked me a question, I would ask staff, so...
Mayor, could I jump in?
Please, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Landrum. I mean, first of all, you, you know, you kind of clarified that the scenario I gave earlier, and I do agree that your questions were very, like, you know, I think they were basic question, I agree with you. I was surprised that we were not in the position to offer the questions that you ask, and I find out because due to staff transition, and then there's some other things happening, and so, it's good in some way, but right now, we're not talking about those things. We're focusing on having a policy, how to create a policy for future and present, future council, individual outreach sessions. And staff time is certainly a public resource. I would just say, that's really, unfortunately, it's kind of city manager and the city council member needed to communicate on that. One, if individual city council member wanted these questions, and I know the policy says that the city manager, and goes through the city manager, and the city manager can delegate, and then talk to department heads and departments, whoever needs to do that. And if, I wasn't sure if our policy stated anywhere to say if this, if in staff's opinion, this issue, the questions, is going to take, say, up to two hours of time, and then, perhaps city manager can bring before the city council as a whole to ask for permission to do research, study, and then proceed. And all that, so that's just give some parameters. I think the concern mainly is just because we have a lot on our plate, and then, we have to, staff sometimes have to change direction in order to, you know, answer these questions, and so, something else may just be put in the back burner, and then, a lot of times, it's difficult to determine what is priority, what is not, which is what I've been trying to do. Eventually, like I said, I feel like after a little while, once we all have a more cohesive team, and everybody being in our positions for a little longer, I think it will be more experienced in responding to your question. I can be more of help, because now, I don't know who is doing, you know, I'm trying to get used to who is doing what and how they're doing it, and how much time. So, that's, it's part of me not being very familiar with the city and the day-to-day part of that. So, again, I think, Mayor, it sounds like you had offered a few things, suggestion, we can...
I'm thinking that it's 10:00, and that maybe this is something we need a little more time to allow the council members to have some more thought, along with the city clerk yourself and the city attorney to come back with. Maybe you've heard some of the comments tonight, and maybe we can all process all that and submit individually some things to city council, I mean, to the city manager, and then re-adjinize it.
Mayor, along those lines, one of the alternatives, and you could do this anyways, is to have a council ad hoc subcommittee, have two members to take the spirit of what you all were talking about, to work with city staff on a policy. Or, in the alternative, you know, as you mentioned, individual council members could communicate with city manager and the team. But, to your point, there's a policy coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Newmeyer. I think maybe if we can try and get everybody to submit and circle back, we have a lot of committee work already going on, and the desire to have listening sessions, so I think it would just add one more layer. So, if we could do that over the next few weeks, process that individually, submit and come back to...
What are we doing again? Sorry, I was zoning out a little bit.
Taking the information from tonight, and giving it to them, and then bringing it back with some other options of how we can put something together. I think, I think you heard...
Are we submitting in a...
How do we get there? How do we get there?
Are we submitting it in writing, or, so I don't want to...
To the city manager in writing, yes. Individually, so we don't have a Brown Act issue. Thank you. Does that work for you? Thank you, thank you. Future agenda items?
I would like to have a conversation about amending the California, the city's building code to require elevators in housing development.
Were we going to send that to Planning Commission, I think? Wasn't that what...
I thought, I thought it was a future agenda item.
The California building code is, every couple years, there's an update, and I think usually it happens January. I don't know, maybe the most recent set has been gone through. So, yeah, if we can hit a cycle to update the building code, then we can incorporate with that cycle. And then, if we cannot, then we can... It require ordinance, it require, you know...
Yeah, there's two paths here. One would be to simply amend the adopted building code. The state provides a building code, and cities adopt them, and then we can tweak it a bit if we want. So, we could just amend the current adopted state code to address what council members...
That's what I was... I thought that's what Mr. Graham had said, so that's...
Yeah, or to the city manager's point, we could wait till the next cycle of when the state puts out a new building code, and then we adopt that by reference. I'm not sure when that would be happening. So, those are two options.
Okay, that...
Yeah, I thought it was going to go to planning before us, though. That was what I understood from Mr. Graham. I don't know.
I thought that he said that, would that happen in this whole process? If it came before us, would it go to planning first?
Goes to planning first.
Just because it's a future agenda item?
Yeah.
I think...
Not as a future agenda item, we just gave direction, I think, to...
Adoption by reference. So, yes, if council, if there was a council consensus to consider an amendment to the existing adopted building code that the city has right now in place, then that process would involve going to PC and then coming to council, so...
So, it's a future agenda item, that's what I'm asking for, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Or Planning Commission.
No, it's just...
Well, to...
Okay, got it, got it.
Yeah, it'd be a natural part of the process to go through PC.
So, could I just say for that and for artificial turf? Just in one thing?
No.
Oh, two different, okay, two different future agenda items, okay.
I'll support the elevator.
The elevator?
Is there support for the elevator?
Bringing back a consideration for the...
Building code. It will go to Planning Commission first.
I can see that going there.
Hmm?
I'd like to know when the cycle is...
They can notify us.
This is twenty, this year is 2020, what, three? So, probably going to be 2025 now, by the January or 20... Because I can't keep track of the cycle. It's every, I think it's every couple years. I should verify that. Let me verify with the building department.
We have three council members, so that'll give direction, anyway, so...
I suppose you could... If the building, if the normal building code cycle isn't going to happen soon, then to come back with just an amendment to the existing building code. If it's going to happen anyway soon, then, okay. I mean, and just leave it up to city manager discretion, Scott Graham on what does soon mean?
Okay, yeah, and soon would be in January, right? Or some, whatever she, whatever it's supposed to be.
Sure, if it's...
Okay.
If it's done by January, then, sure.
Okay, thank you. I think it's really important for accessibility for people. And then, a future agenda item for considering eliminating artificial turf. No, but it's become a big thing. It's very dangerous, and I...
For sports.
For sports, and for just us all to breathe, you know? Like, it's really harmful. They've found, the governor has made it...
We can't have discussion on it. I know, but you can't have discussion on it. Thank you. Is there support for that?
I support bringing back more information about...
It's fine, council consensus.
Thank you.
Thank you. A reminder, Thanksgiving Community Dinner, Thursday, 1:00 to 3:00, with that, we're adjourned.